Started. Okay, okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the town.
We have to move Gemma Lett in.
I'm looking for Gemma Lett now. Is it just a phone number or is it going to be her name? How'd she log in?
Probably her husband. I, I don't hold on.
Can they even hear us? Can she hear us at least? Ask her to raise her hand.
Her name should know.
Yeah, there it is. I see it. That's a. It's a, it's on the list.
Gemma, I see now. Yeah. Okay, I'm moving. And there she is. Okay, guys, have a great meeting.
Thank you. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the township of West Orange Planning Board Meeting, April 3rd, 2024. Notice that this meeting has been given to the township clerk and posted on township bulletin board and township website calendar, and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, known to matters will start at 10:30 PM. May I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The next regular planning board meeting will be held May 1st, 2024 at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Yamalat Roll Paul, please.
Mr. Alpert. Mr. Cardoza.
Present.
Ms. Caffrey.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Smirado.
Here.
Mr. Wox.
He's not here.
Yeah, Council President Rutherford.
Here.
Mayor McCartney.
Present.
Mr. Guarino.
Present.
Chairman Bagow.
Here. Thank you. First thing on the agenda is to adopt the minutes of a number of meetings. I make a motion that we adopt the me, the minute, what, I'm sorry. The planning board minutes of 10:25, 2023. Are there any objections, additions, or deletions? Seeing none, I need a second on the motion.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Guarino, seconds on the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert.
Yes.
Mr. Guarino.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Mrs. Smirado.
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor McCartney.
Yes.
Chairman Bagow.
Yes. I make a motion that we adopt the 11/29/2023 West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. Do I have a set out? Do, is anybody having any additions or deletions? Seeing none, do I have a second? Second, no seconds. Thank you.
Who's second? I'm sorry.
Mr. Guarino. Vice Chairman. He shook his head. I got that.
Okay.
On the motion.
Mr. Alpert.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Mrs. Smirado.
Yes.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Guarino.
Yes.
Chairman Bagow.
Yes, motion adopted. I make a motion, we adopt the January 3rd, 2020, 24, West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. Do I hear any deletions or additions? Seeing none, do I have a second on the motion? Mr. Cardoza's seconds. Thank you, Mr. Cardoza. You're welcome. On the motion.
Mr. Alpert.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Smirado.
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Guarino.
Yes.
Chairman Bagow.
Yes. I make a motion, we adopt the draft minutes of March, of, March 6th, 2024. Do I have, hear any additions or deletions? Seeing none, do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza's seconds on the motion, Yamalat. Thank you.
Mr. Alpert.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Mrs. Smirado.
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza.
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey.
Yes.
Uh, Council President Rutherford.
Yes.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Bagow.
Yes, motion adopted. Thank you. Uh, Ms. McGovern, would you swear in the township professionals, please?
Yes, I, we have Kate Keller and Mr. John Hess. Um, if you please raise your right hands. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So we're going to go a little out of order, uh, this evening to allow the Essex County Country Club Objector to have their planner speak later. So the first order of business will be PB 24-04 of Yurkana LLC Block 65, Lots 22.01, 32, and 34 Zone I, 76-82 Ashland Avenue. Application to occupy and develop the existing vacant two-story metal warehouse building space consisting of probably approximately of 9,482 square feet into a Class 1 cannabis cultivator used with 2,500 square feet of cultivation space on the first floor to stripe the parking lot and put up security fence. I think they're going to modify that. And for the applicant.
Good evening, everyone. Kim McLeod of the Givens Law Firm. Uh, here is the attorney for the applicant. I've also got, uh, a couple of folks with me this evening. The applicant himself, Mr. James Jackson, who I think was popping in to say hello to everyone there, uh, as well as, uh, Sean Fisher, who's going to be our architect, and Alex Doherty, who's our, our professional planner.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, everyone, good evening and, and thank you for, for, uh, getting us back in. As the board will recall, we're hearing a reconsideration of an application that had been previously heard. Uh, seeking conditional use approval and minor site plan approval for the development and construction of a cannabis cultivation facility, uh, there on National Avenue. The submission that you've been provided, uh, is fairly duplicative of what we've given before with a number of changes, uh, related to access design and landscape, uh, really in response to a lot of the conversations and questions that, that the board raised and the board professionals highlighted. Uh, we've also very thankfully had the ability to work with the board professionals, uh, as well as the fire chief and the police chief to advance, uh, these plans. And we've gotten, uh, sign up and approval letters from, from both of them. I, I believe the fire chief circulated that letter earlier today. The, the link to the planning board materials was updated to reflect that. Uh, and we also received, uh, an email, uh, confirming that the, the realignment of the security fence that, uh, Mr. Fisher can talk about, uh, was also approved by the chief earlier today. So all of these, uh, really go to telling, uh, a great story of how we've, you know, really brought, brought in what I think is a much better, uh, and cleaner application for the board to, to review and very candidly, hopefully approve this evening. Uh, as I mentioned, we've got the three witnesses. Uh, Mr. Fisher had previously testified before the board. Mr. Doherty hasn't. Uh, and Mr. Doherty's here to talk a little bit about, uh, the overall parking scheme and, uh, the, the variance that we've noted, uh, really out of an abundance of caution. Uh, as the board may recall, the, the parking for the site, uh, was consolidated really to one side, one side of the site. We've really worked this back through and, and looked at a number of options as to parking. And, uh, we believe that there is, uh, a parking variance that we should be requesting, really out of an abundance of caution to say there's, there's a count of the number of parking spaces where we need relief from the boards, the boards count. There's also a world where we don't, uh, but for purposes of the conditional use compliance, we're satisfying the number of spaces that's required for the conditional use. And we're seeking relief from the number of additional spaces for additional space that's being occupied by the applicant. And that's something Mr. Doherty's going to talk a little bit more about. Ms. McGovern, I don't know if you want to swear him now or just wait until we get to his testimony? Does that make more sense?
Um, if he's going to be the first one up and you are about ready to morph into him, I will do that now. It's your choice.
He's going to back clean up for me, so.
Okay, we'll do that then.
We'll do it then.
Well, don't I have to? Okay, so I'll be just, I, I'll give the oath to each person as they're about to testify.
And, and all the others were previously sworn, but yes, we'll, 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 we'll re swear them for sanity's sake. Um, really quickly, uh, by virtue of a couple of housekeeping things, we renoticed as the board directed for this meeting. Uh, we've, uh, resolved, I think, the open issue as to the building lot number versus the lot address and all, all the permitting questions there. Uh, and we also had submitted a report detailing the, um, drainage uh, on the site and the, and the history of its development. Uh, and we do have, uh, a professional engineer with us this evening who can answer any questions as to that, but I think we've, we've addressed that issue, uh, by virtue of the memorandum that, that does demonstrate that the site had been, uh, previously, uh, fully, fully impervious. So what we're proposing this evening doesn't deviate from that. Uh, I do, again, very briefly, want to say thank you to the board professionals, I, and the board for, for reviewing these materials and then, uh, really handed over to Mr. Fisher. Wherever Sean went. Hang on, there you are. Hi. Um, who can walk the board through the, the, the changes that have been made to the plans and really highlight what those changes were and how they're beneficial and responsive to the, to the concerns the board had raised. So I think with that, I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Fisher. Um, Sean, you remain under oath and, and Ms. McGovern's going to confirm that for you.
Okay, Mr. Fisher, you raised your right hand. Uh, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You're on mute, or I can't hear you at least.
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right.
Sean, if you could just give the, give the board a, a quick summary of kind of what's, what's been submitted, what's been updated, and then really walk through the plans as to, as to what's been realigned. I think that'd be useful.
Sure. I'm sharing my screen, so let me know if you cannot see it. Okay, so, uh, we, we looked at several, um, extensive changes, um, to really address the parking situation, as Cameron had mentioned.
Mr. Fisher, excuse me, can, can you identify these? Did we, do we have this? And if there's, if so, just identify them so we know which, uh, when you're talking about.
Sure, yes, sir. So, thank you. Basically, basically, we have numbered every single parking space that we have that pertains, uh, to this lot.
I think what the, what the chairman's looking for is this is, this is the, the updated site plan dated, uh, March 19th, March 19th of 2024. Uh, it's labeled Site 1 in the lower right-hand corner and overall site plan. Uh, and Sean's going to walk through the, I believe it's seven-page set here. Um, identify those changes for him.
Thank you.
This is also not available. Yep.
Okay, great. Um, so basically going back, this is the shaded building is, uh, the, the subject building. Um, and we still have parking spaces, um, that are identified in this blue shading, uh, area which pertained to Yurkana. Um, that hasn't changed any. Um, we have identified multiple spaces, um, that are, uh, on this property um, along, uh, this, this building here, uh, that's existing and along this, uh, property line as well. Um, s, uh, some of these right here are existing and these are striped and existing in this, in this area. And we're also using, uh, three spaces out on the road for a total of 48 spaces. Um, and I, I believe Alexander will, will speak a little bit more about that and the variances that are required because we have a breakdown here. Um, showing that, um, based on the square footages and the number of spaces per square feet, uh, you have a total required of 52 spaces. We have 48 proposed, so there's a difference there of four spaces. And, uh, and so, you know, there's a variance for those, which Cameron, uh, mentioned that Alexander will, uh, we're, we'll speak to. Uh, so this is the overall site plan. Um, forgive me for just a second. I'm going to move this around a little bit. All right, and this is the same site plan, just enlarged so that you can see things quite a bit, uh, better. Um, so this site plan, um, also shows the existing fence and gate uh, along this property line. Um, previously, we had shown a, a much tighter area that was fenced, that had a fence in this, approximately in this area as well as, as this area over here. After further review and, um, approval, like Cameron mentioned of, uh, the police department and security requirements, um, determined that we don't, we no longer need that, uh, which greatly freed up, um, uh, traffic throughout the site. Um, which is a great, great benefit. We also were able to, uh, obtain the fire department's approval. Uh, so again, the red hatched area is, uh, the fire lane. Um, this, this depicts the, um, the approximate width of the drive, although the, the whole area is actually paved. Um, so, uh, I will show you, uh, there's some circulation of fire trucks and, and some upcoming, uh, drawings here. Uh, go to this one. We also have some details of the, the parking, the handicap parking requirements, uh, as well as the, including this, this striping and the signage, um, uh, that will be required as well as the lighting details because those came up in question as well. Um, just further clarifying the light fixtures that will be placed on the building and the, um, data sheets as well as the landscaping. We have all that information included. But wanted to obviously focus on, um, the, the circulation too, um, just to clarify, this here is the delivery, uh, vehicle uh, plan. And as you can tell right here, this is the, the largest Mercedes Sprinter vans, um, to make sure that we were accounting for the largest type of delivery vehicle that will be in here. So we ran our models and, and, um, deliveries coming off of Ashland would be able to circulate, park into a designated spot, um, or any spot really, and back out really easy. So no problems with circulation on delivery vehicles. Um, this last sheet that Cameron mentioned previously is Site 7. This here depicts the circulation of a 40-foot-long aerial fire truck. Um, and it is coming off of Ashland, comes into, uh, the space, backs up, turns around, and it can go right back into Ashland without having to go through any other gates or fencing that we previously had before. Uh, we did present this to, uh, the fire department and received an approval letter, uh, for the circulation here. Uh, Cameron, am I missing anything? Is there anything else that I need to further explain?
Yeah, so Sean, there are a couple of questions and, and I'll direct you to the, the updated CME letter that's dated, uh, April 2nd of 2024. There are a number of questions related to kind of the layout of the space within the building itself, uh, and how we got to some of the, some of the parking requirements. Um, if you could, and, and I don't think this is the sheet to do it on, but perhaps going back to sheet two, uh, walk the board through just how the, how the floor area calculations are broken down, uh, and, and how that relates to the parking numbers as, as you all have calculated them.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, um, let me look at this.
There might be a better sheet. I just chose.
Yeah, no problem. So on the first sheet on, uh, Site 1, I believe it's called, yeah. There's a parking requirements table, um, that is, uh, on the side and uh, we've got uh, the building, uh, square footages that are, you know, shown here, uh, broken up on, on the usage. And, um, it's one per, 400 square feet. So, um, showing seven required, uh, for that, uh, for that building, for our building in question, uh, because it's a larger piece of property with multiple buildings. We have those calculations as well. So the square footages of each one of those buildings and, um, and then, and then those associated, um, parking spaces that are required. Um, I know there was a question that was, um, um, about the gross square footage and, um, I'm going to jump over to this, um, indoor plan sheet. If everybody can see that. So I'm going to zoom in just a bit. So we've got the first floor plan on the left.
Yeah, you're showing, you're showing just for the benefit of, of those who might be oh, ha, have a little trouble squinting to see the bottom right-hand corner. Um, that's A100, uh, which is the sheet. This is again part of the architectural set that was previously submitted and available.
This is dated. What's the date on that? 11024. Okay.
24. All right, yep. Thank you, Cameron. Sorry to, uh, overlook that. Uh, so yes, the, the, we went through several iterations of, um, layouts, uh, before arriving at this final one previous to any submissions at all. And, um, this, this here is, um, showing basically what the operations, um, may look like inside, and it is, is calculated. If you look here, total area gross, we had noted that as 5,335 square feet. Um, the canopy area, uh, you're looking at 1,861. Uh, mind you, these numbers were, um, were calculated back, based on previous, uh, layouts. So it was actually my oversight that these two numbers didn't add up to, um, some of the numbers before. Now, however, with that being said, it was correctly calculated based on this. So this, this, um, let me go back. So this is the parking requirements, uh, table, right? And this was showing how each one of these sections within this floor plan here was being calculated. And so the difference here is I had the canopy square footage listed as 1,861 square feet, when in reality it's 2,500 square feet total. Okay, for just, just the cultivation canopy square footage, um, which aligns with, uh, Mr. James's, uh, license. Um, we have an unused area on the second floor, uh, which, uh, comprises of 3,192 square feet. Okay, and then we have support and office spaces both on the first and the second floors, which comprise of 3,671 square feet. Okay, so basically, you're looking at, um, let me, let me get this right, 9,363 square feet total. Okay, so the, the building is 101 feet long by 46 and a half feet wide. Okay, so when you double that, because there's two floors, 9,363 feet. Um, now getting into the details a little bit here, but, um, basically what I want to say is when you add up these three numbers, the 2,531, 92, and a 3,671, that equals your 9,363. So e, everything lines up, okay? So you have a, um, based on the r, regulations for cultivation, you have, um, one parking space per 400 square feet. So being that you have 2,500 square feet of cultivation, uh, you divide that by 400, you get seven spaces. Okay, and then the office space is one space per 250 square feet. You have 3,671 square feet divided by, uh, 250, you get 15 spaces. This is where you have the little footnote of V1 variance required for additional 15 spaces. Okay, then you have the other three buildings. So when you work out those calculations, you get 32, 7, and 6 for a total of 52. So again, the proposed, uh, number of spaces uh, is 48, and so the difference there is four. Cameron, is there anything else that I need to go in, in depth on, in this topic here?
Uh, that, that was quite in-depth. Um, I, I think the, the, the one other bit I'd asked you to hit is you've mentioned that there's an unused portion of the second floor. Just so I can confirm and, and for the board's benefit, if there's any future use of that space, we'd need to return to the board to activate that space, correct?
Yes, because that would be a condition that you'd need more spaces.
Yep.
She'd have to come back either getting more spaces or seeking other variants to activate the other space. So that, uh, Ms. McGovern will be a condition if, if the board so sees fit.
If want to use the second floor area.
Or any additional space beyond what we discussed, any additional space.
Can they quantify the space that's not accounted for in the parking calculation?
Yeah, that's everything. So there's a, a, a number that they will have. They're gonna, they're apparently seeking a variance for some. So everything in the building addition, additional to the number we agreed to tonight will be additional space. That's not.
What is that square, what is that square footage that they're not parking?
Yeah, they, we're going to have to put that into the, uh, condition. So.
I'll have to answer, Dr. Bagow. Let them answer.
I, I got that. They're gonna, they're gonna have to do that right now.
I, I, I can definitely take that one. Um, so the, the 3,192 square feet that's marked as unused second floor space, Mr. Klein, that's the, that's the space that we're not calculating for having any kind of, uh, parking obligation right now because it's unused space. Uh, that's the space that we would ask that if we activate that space in the future, we'd have to come back to the board for.
Okay, so the unused second floor space is 3,192 square feet, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I just have to ask a question. How will we know if you're using that space or not using that space? Is it blocked off somehow?
Sean.
Yes, there's a, let me get back to this, uh. Correct. So if you can see this, this is the perimeter of the building and only this shaded light green area is going to have, um, uh, to be occupied. Um, it'll have a continuous wall from floor to ceiling. And the only reason why we have a door here is for fire egress. In the event that this is blocked, then you can get out through this stair. But everything else will be, um, not used.
Okay.
So, so that's a continuous stair from that doorway to that staircase? It's not indicating.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The secondary door you just said that's going to use for fire egress. How does it attach to that staircase? There's nothing indicating it.
Yeah, it's another means of egress out.
I, I understand that it's on the second floor. The way that plan looks like it's a secondary egress to fall down to the first floor. Where does that, where, there's no hallway? Or where, where's the structure that attaches to that staircase?
He wants, if the door goes outside, it goes downstairs into the first floor.
That 3,192 square feet is actual floor area.
Right.
It's just not being used. There's no way to monitor that, but you're telling us you're not going to use that space.
Yeah, there will be operations per se. If there's anything up there, it'll be mechanical equipment for serving the first floor, uh, space below. Uh, but there's no, there's no, I, there won't be any room to occupy any, any area up there.
But you just said it was going to be occupied.
No.
You just testified it was going to be for the occupancy.
No.
That's what you said.
No, sir. I didn't say that. Uh, I said it's not going to be occupied. It's not used.
Well, you have offices up there, you have locker rooms, and you have, um, I can't really see if you can zoom in a little further. So if you're going to have offices and lockers in there, that means people are going to go up there. That's occupied. Even if it's a matter, even if it's a matter of seconds, that's occupied.
No, so this is the 3,192 future expansion or just area that's not going to be used. This area here, this light green, plus all this light green through here.
Right.
That, that amount is your 3,671 office space.
Okay, so go back to that light green on the second floor, the occupied area.
Yeah.
Okay, so you zoom in there, right, in the light green area, the shaded area, correct?
Yeah.
That's going to be occupied, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the egress door in the middle of the center of the, the door, uh, the, the, or it says staff lockers, that egress door, no, the other one on the other side of the hall, on the, uh, western side of the building. Where does that door lead to?
This, this unoccupied space here.
That's a, that's an actual space? That's not a, it's an empty space then?
Empty, yeah, it's not built out. It won't have any walls or anything in there.
So that's the continuous path to the staircase. That's what my question was.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. There's a staircase back here, but, but this, because this square footage is so small, it really only requires this stair here for life safety egress.
Well, I, I, I'll, I'll argue different than that. So, and I understand what you're saying from a code standpoint, but you know, once it, once it, egress is blocked and egress is blocked from experience. So.
Pete, does that door, does that corridor door have to open out into the unoccupied space or can open?
I don't know what the code is on that particular one. I, I, I'm not aware, but I, I would say that, you know, whatever the fire subcode official deems, that's what would be. And if they, and if they're using the fire code, if that's what it's supposed to be, then say, I would say, yeah, it's correct, but that would have to go through plan review.
Yeah, actually, there's a good chance we could just block this off because the square footage is so small, um, below 30, uh, occupants, you can have just one means right here. So.
Um, I'm, I would be against, I would be against that.
Right.
Yeah, I would be against. You, you need egress. So you're on the second floor, you need egress, um, and it, and so, yeah, they'll do not remove that. So.
Do you need, do you need lighting up there, even though it's unoccupied space? You need lighting to be able to get from that secondary egress to the stair number two?
They'll have to have emergency lighting.
There'll, there'll be a light, yes, there, there'll be light fixtures because it'll, it's almost like a um attic type space. It's, it's not built out, but there'll be lights, so yes.
Stair number two, the staircase is shown coming down through the um, your proposed beds. How's that? And also through the stack canopy area.
Right. So, so these.
How does that get addressed in your calculations?
So, the, okay, so this actually comes down, but it is, it's like framed so such that, but. Like a building section would show this, the underside of the stairs coming down, but there's enough height between floor and the ceiling. To where we're gonna double stack on this side, but these four tables here will not be.
You're saying on the, on on the rear of the building, those four tables will not be double stacked.
Correct.
Okay. And on the plan where you say that you have twenty-five hundred square foot grow area, that that's not identified by colors. Is that, is that supposed to be the dark green areas or what exactly is that?
Correct. Um, it, and and James or Cameron too, the trim and drying and packaging. Because there was some back and forth dialogue on that as well. Um, can you guys confirm that for me?
Yeah.
Am I good to speak to that?
Yep, that's you.
Okay, yeah, so, so.
Just for, just sorry, James, just for clarity sake, James uh James Jackson was previously sworn uh as as uh the operator. Uh, of this facility, the the CEO of Yorcan, uh Diana, I don't know if you.
This is sort of a new app. Mr. Jackson, uh, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Just put your name on the record, so that's clear.
Yes, James Jackson, CEO, Yorcan LLC. Um, yeah, so the the areas that are inclusive of the um uh twenty-five hundred square feet are the dark green as well as the light green. So when I say light green, that is inclusive of the drying and trimming, batch holding, packaging and curing area. So per the CRC for a micro business license, that area has to be twenty-five hundred feet or under. Um, we are slightly under that twenty-four hundred feet, um twenty-five hundred feet um in that whole area. Um, now, um specifically, we are not allowed to go over that. So that is all areas that have anything to do with um plant touching activity. Um, which is how those areas are identified in the light, in the dark green and light green.
Great, thanks, James. I think that that Sean addresses most of the 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 building internal calculations and and. Those side of questions, but sorry.
If I could ask another question, then.
You know, we're we're getting, oh, guys, we're getting a little out of order, so why don't we have him finish his testimony? And then we'll go through the board and ask, okay? How's that?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, Sean, I wanna, I wanna drag you back uh to to the CME letter. Uh, where there are a number of items that, you know, I know we've, we've talked about previously, but I just want to touch on. Briefly, you know, you'd noted that there had been previously security fencing proposed here uh in 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 close proximity of the building. That's now been removed. Um, have we had the opportunity, has the applicant had the opportunity to have that reviewed by the police chief?
Mr. Fisher?
Cameron, I could, I could only hear the the first part of that, say that, say that other again.
Sorry, Sean. Um, the the applicant has had the changes to the security fencing reviewed by the police chief, correct?
Correct.
And we received correspondence confirming that that the chief had no issues with moving that security fencing.
Correct, correct, yes.
And and yeah, and you've seen the correspondence uh from the chief today uh that that confirmed that. And we can, we can provide that to the board uh as a supplemental matter. Uh, uh, Mr. McGovern, if if that's something the board, the board would wish to have.
The email from the chief of police? Yeah, um, I thought you already submitted that, but uh you can submit that after, we we have it.
Okay, yeah.
I thought it was made part of the record.
I think, is it, if it's there.
We'll make sure we have it, just, we have.
I think, Jamal, I think you have that, uh, just to make sure that uh the email from the chief of police confirming that he's uh given his approval. To remove that security fence um will be made part of the record.
Yes, we, I have the email, but it's not posted, it was not.
Okay, but we'll, we'll make sure it's part of the file materials.
As to, as to uh the site identification sign, this is comment number thirteen. Uh, I believe we previously testified that there would be no external sign on the building other than a building number, correct?
Correct.
Okay, uh, and as to the remainder of the comments that require uh adjustments to to lighting fixtures and whatnot. I know we've provided some of the the uh the cut sheets for the building mounted light.
Just lost sound, I don't know if you guys can hear me.
That would kind of, I kind of know.
I can hear you now.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes. Yeah, I thought so.
I'm sorry, I don't know why I'm having audio issues, I apologize. Uh, was there any questions that you guys were waiting on me for, Cameron, I'm sorry.
Uh, Cameron's getting back on, Sean, just hold him, hold on a minute. I I didn't hear his last question either.
Okay.
The, while, while he's coming in, were we talking about the CME report of April one? Is that what he was going through?
Uh, yes.
I was hearing numbers and then he went dead, okay.
Yes.
April two, is it April two?
April two is the updated. Right. Uh, I believe that's the one Mr. McLeod is referencing.
Okay, all right, got it. Yeah, okay. That's why my, my numbers weren't matching up.
Okay. Um, let's see. Okay, who are we waiting for? Uh, Mr. McLeod is trying to get back on, Mr. Chairman. Gotcha. I I think he just got kicked out for some reason.
What I can say is on a night like this, I'm still happy I'm on Zoom. It's raining so hard.
Um, I guess while we're waiting, uh, Sean, I have on that same CME letter, it's April second. Uh, twenty twenty-four updated version of April first. Uh, there's a comment as to uh the uh compact spaces on the plan. Um, if you could just uh address the board regarding those spaces and and the why they're being proposed. And uh the benefits of them to the overall parking layout.
Sure, um, yeah, basically, um, we realized that we didn't.
And Sean, if you could show them on the screen.
Let me, let me pull that back.
Thank you.
What, what number is that on this April second?
Uh, it is number nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
Does that show up for you guys?
Yes, perfect.
I'll zoom in just a little bit here, go to the site two. Yeah, so we've identified several um compact uh parking spaces with the word compact. Uh, so we've got one for Yorcan, um, we've got several out here. Um, and this actually allows better circulation uh for the fire trucks. And dealing with some existing conditions, so um, you know, with the proximity of the buildings and and the way that the existing conditions are. Um, it made a lot of sense to have the compact cars, uh parking spaces kind of at the corner to minimize um. You know, the the possible obstruction of a vehicle being right there in the corner. Um, so we've identified some there, we've identified some along uh this property lawn as well. And unless there was something, I I'm trying to remember if there's any, any other specific um questions or um.
Will there be identification so people will know those are compact spaces only?
Yeah, n- normally, what we'll do is is take a um a stencil and write compact right on, right on the uh. Uh, space like you normally see uh elsewhere.
Right, and you have one EV space marked, is that EV or is that a, is that a space, is that uh potential, is that make ready or operating?
This is, this is an EV's parking space, it'll be uh ready to go from my understanding.
So I I'm sorry, I want to be clear, i- is it ready to go means is you can use it or make ready, which means it can be made ready to use in the future?
I'm gonna leave on uh James uh for that answer, because I'm not sure if there is anything that requires him with the landlord on on that.
Okay. Yeah, James, if if you could, it's really your preference as to whether you want to make the space make ready. Or have it fully uh prepared. Yeah, operational right away to service an electric vehicle or just have the electric system uh installed. So that it would be make ready to make it operational. James, I don't know if you, what what your thoughts are on that?
Yeah, it would be, it would be operational for for a.
Right.
Need to be able to come, plug in, charge.
Awesome, thanks, James, um, and thanks, Sean. Uh, another question, Sean, as I'm just trying to find the specific uh number. Uh, oh, number fifteen, yeah. Uh, as to the lighting, Sean, uh, comment number fifteen. It says that uh an additional lighting pole would be needed uh in the parking lot. And uh that that's something that uh, you know, we could accommodate uh an additional similar lighting pole. Uh, in the correct location to provide uh and uh comply with that comment of uh of Mr. Hess. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Thank you.
If I, if I may on that, um, we don't know, we don't know what the lighting is that's proposed, because there were no lighting isolux. Plan submitted to show the light levels on the ground. I don't know if you need one pole or three poles. There should be for any of the lighting that's proposed, there should be a plan showing the uh. Showing the isolux patterns or the lumens at the ground surface to demonstrate compliance with the ordinance.
Yes, and uh we would certainly uh submit that uh to comply and make sure it does as a, as a condition. We'd be happy to do that. Diana will make that as a condition. Mr. Fisher, until Mr. McLeod comes back, can we have the board ask questions? Uh, just one, one moment, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'm just trying to make sure we're going through everything. I think uh a lot of the other comments as to operations, as Cameron noted, were addressed at the prior meeting. And are already on the record. Um, I did want to mention that, as Cameron mentioned, the um. Fire chief uh letter uh as to uh the emergency access uh that was submitted to the board. Uh, uh, this afternoon, uh dated today, uh from Fire Chief Vecchio, uh approving the. And Sean, this is your understanding that this letter from the fire chief, which we can bring up if that's the board, we can, on the screen if, as an exhibit. Okay, the board received it, I guess we just want to make sure um that. We'll put it in the final package. Okay, great. Um, that's all I have as far as direct questions for uh Mr. Fisher, uh Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you. Uh, when Mr. McLeod comes back, if he has any questions, we'll go from there, so we'll ask. Thank you. Mr. Fisher, uh, Mr. Guarino, do you have any questions? Vice Chairman, do you have any questions?
No, sir, not at this time.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate the parking variance explanation. I wonder if there's any. Contemplation on the potential use of the second floor.
Um, sure, we, Mayor, thank you for that question. I think Mr. Jackson could uh address that. And just uh with the caveat of of future use would obviously, any future use, no matter what it's used for, as Mr. Chairman said. Would have to be approved by this board. Um, you know, no matter what it's being used for, but uh. Uh, Mr. Jackson, if if you could speak to your. We're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna have to Mr. Jackson do that right now, I want to get through the parking.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Hey, good. Ma- Mayor McCartney, do you have any other questions?
Uh, no, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Council President Rutherford, do you have any questions?
Uh, I do not, uh, Mr. Chair, I just want to note though that I did uh receive both the fire chief and the police chief's uh letters today. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Alper, do you have any questions?
Um, I've got a couple, um. Was all entry and exit initially supposed to be on Park and not Ashland? Or I thought that was an initial condition of approval from the task force in the council. And now there's uh arrows showing entry at least on Ashland.
I'm not sure, I'm sorry, if we direct the question to Mr. Fisher, but I'm not sure I understand the exact uh question. Uh, Mr. Alper, could you just rephrase it, I'm sorry?
Sure, my my understanding and and what was initially on the plans was that all entry and exit to the site was coming from uh the Park Avenue side. And there wasn't supposed to be any on Ashland, and I believe it was the case when I watched the uh discussion. Whenever it was, that that it was a condition of approval, both from the initial task force and then from the town council. That there not be entry and exit from Ashland because of the residential on Ashland and the uh, I think the proximity to the park as well. So I wanted to check on if that had changed.
Sure, um, Mr. Alper, we submitted the resolution of local support from the council uh for this site as part of our original submission. Uh, there was no condition uh as to access being only from Park. Um, that's a part of the record. Uh, there was no mention of that in the zoning confirmation letter. Um, those were submitted to the board as uh per required. And Mr. Fisher could speak to this, but it's part of the record already, so I'll just restate it. Uh, access from Park, um, because of the uh kind of more narrow. Uh, aisle widths, especially for like emergency vehicles, um, is not as uh safe to the site. As access from uh Ashland for the emergency vehicles and which has the requisite width. So that's the, that's the thinking, that's why it was changed as per this board's comments. And uh, you know, move to having access from Ashland.
Parking, I have a couple others, uh, I think we covered coming back for the extra space. And so the variance for the fifteen spaces for the office space, um, so there were, there were, the request there is that the uh. The office space requires zero spots?
Yes, that's the, that's correct, yeah.
But by the way, I think.
He's back. You're back, we can hear you.
Sorry about that. I ju- just to make sure I don't fall out again, I'm actually gonna shut off the video. Um, I promise I'll still look like this, um, but uh I'll I'll turn this off so that, so that I'm hopefully not jumping the, jumping the feet anymore.
And also on parking, um, so three of the proposed spots are on street spots on Ashland Avenue itself, not onsite but offsite. Is that, um, I don't actually know that's uh allowed?
Uh, yes, that, Sean, if you want to address the street parking available currently that we're showing on the site.
Right, yes, so my my understanding is that the, we were able to to get those three spots because they are within the property lines, right? They don't, they don't, they're not in front of any bu- any neighboring properties, uh, but they're along the Ashland Avenue um road there. On our site and my understanding is that that is uh allowed.
There's current street parking uh on Ashland, Sean.
Correct.
And we've talked about the lighting, um, on the security fencing, I know we don't want to get into the security plan exactly, you know, in public. And I know the chief approved it, but if, you know, um, if there's words that can be said explaining why. and I know the chief approved it, but i- if, you know, um, if there's words that can be said explaining why, um, we should feel good about there not being security fencing.
I'm sure.
I think each of the retail sites we've approved have had some security fencing.
Sure, I've just done, we've done a couple of the retail sites, um. I think at least two of which do not have any security fencing. Uh, Mr. Alper, um, there's no requirement for security fencing in the state regulations for, uh, cannabis security. Um, initially it was proposed, as per the record, uh, the previous hearings, the security pen- fencing was proposed uh, kind of as a added bonus, if you will, in an industrial zone. And then, uh, once we heard the feedback from the board as to, and went back and took a look as to access, um, it was decided that, uh, security fence actually makes the site uh, more difficult to access, uh, already difficult site from access point.
I'm not sure which witness it's best for, but I think my remaining questions are on, um, the issue of potential odor.
Okay.
Mitigated and what resource there is if it's a problem and how it's, uh, you know, how it's measured, obviously, you know, if, if you're doing something loud, obviously there's decibel measures, I don't know how smells are measured.
That's a good question, we, we, uh, talked about that at the previous meeting, uh, with Mr. Sherard as to, uh, odor and I'm just repeating his testimony, and it's already on the record, but he had testified, Mr. Sherard, the, uh, the applicant's, uh, cannabis security consultant, uh, that odor would be, uh, neutralized, uh, utilizing, uh, carbon filtration uh, system, um, and, uh, you know, we, we certainly comply with whatever the township ordinances, uh, is on that, and, uh, I guess from, uh, and this could be a question for James, but just as a, a practical matter, um, because of the limited, uh, twenty-five hundred square feet of the growing area, um, it's not as much of a odor as would be at the, you know, if it was a bigger cannabis space, um, so just as a practical matter.
Yeah.
And, and I think that, go ahead, let me make sure James, James answers that one too for you.
Yep.
Yeah, just to, just to jump in really quickly, um, Ken, Ken answered it pretty thoroughly, but we will have, uh, carbon filtration systems, what's that? That's essentially known as molecular scrubbing, so what's essentially happening is the, the the foul odor or the, the off odor is going in or the odor that's emanating from plants is going into the, the, the carbon filters throughout the the facility, that, that odor is being scrubbed and, and the clean air is being pushed out. Um, we will also have AC splits above our doors to make sure that when a door does open, um, because we will have, this is a hundred percent secure facility, there can't be any gaps, any, any, any portions where light can come through or any portions where smell can go out. Um, we have a system that the air will be blowing down to keep the smell in while the door is open and then that door, which is secure, um, will be coming back and, and, and being locked, so we've taken, uh, extreme precautions to make sure, um, that there's no odor that's, that's being mitigated um, from the site and also just to give, uh, understanding, if you were looking, when you were looking at the, the, um, the diagram of the indoor drawing, essentially, when you think about this building, we're going to have rooms inside of rooms, right? So like, we're not going to be growing cannabis just out in the open in that facility, the way you're seeing it, they'll be in rooms, right? Which is another layer of the smell to have to come through before it would get to the outdoor, um, so we're, we're taking every precaution to make sure, um, that the only way that you would be able to smell the cannabis was being actually inside the facility, not being outside the facility.
Thank you, I think that's everything on my list right now.
Great, thank you. Mr. Klein?
Yes, thank you. Um, so you, in your site plan, you re- you drew out forty, whatever it is, parking spaces. And then if I look at an aerial photo of the site, there are quite a few vehicles already parked in some of those spots and then there are vehicles parked sort of um, haphazardly throughout the site. You guys still hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm going to turn off the video because I'm, I'm all choppy here, um, so I'm just wondering are those parking spaces going to be striped and is the site going to be, I'll just say cleaned up so that the vehicles that are on site will be in parking spaces? Because I see vehicles that are longer than a typical eighteen foot long parking space, how are you going to accommodate them? That's my question.
Right, um, and again, James can answer too, but going back to our previous testimony that and, uh, our planner will touch on that also.
Well, no, this is new, this is new testimony, that you didn't draw out this forty-eight parking spaces.
No, not, you're right, I'm, I'm sorry.
So let, let, yeah, let the site engineer explain what he, what he's doing.
Yeah, no, yeah, okay, yeah, uh, Sean, uh, the, we are striping the, proposing to stripe the spaces, right, that we're showing?
And the site will be cleaned up.
Thank you.
So, so are some of the tenants leaving the site?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll grab that one real quick, um, and, and James chiming in, you know, operationally. My understanding is that, that a lot of those are just kind of haphazardly parked, Mr. Klein, and they're not actually associated with a tenant in that seventy-six, uh, Ashland building. Uh, so, you know, that really our intention would, were the board to act favorably, we'd say, listen, you know, landlord, this has got to get cleaned up and got to get cleaned up to a way that, that satisfies the board. Um, and, and if that's the way the board feels, we should proceed, that's the way we'll have to proceed.
So, is the use of the seventy-six building being changed? In order to get all those people out?
My understanding is there's no use in the seventy-six building right now at all.
Okay.
So, so really, we'd be taking what's effectively, uh, underparked and, is cleaning it up to adequately accommodate the parking requirements for this use and all the other uses on the property right now.
Alright, that, that's it, that's it for my question.
Thank you. So I just want to make this clear because we're using the term cleanup. So does the cleanup mean you're going to repave the lot, patch the lot, stripe everything, mark compact spaces, mark EV spaces, clean up every car that does not belong to your, um, X amount of spots, whatever spots that you need, all these cars are going to be gone, they can't be parking there, has to go somewhere else. The landlord's going to have to move them somewhere else, the lot's going to have to be paved or patched or cleaned, it's going to have, or resurfaced, it's going to have to be striped, it's going to have to have emergency vehicle striping where emergency vehicles will go, it's going to have to have uh, compact spaces marked appropriately and I, I think that, so is that what cleanup means?
Yeah, it's
Okay, wait, you said repave and?
And I wa- I want, I want the applicant to let us know what they're going to do.
Okay.
It's going to be repave, patch, stripe, tell me, tell us what that means.
Yeah, so, so the intention, Mr. Mr. Chairman, is to bring the site into compliance, right? Um, a- and whether that means based on the existing conditions and obviously you've seen both the images that, that our engineer found uh, and took, you've seen the, the photos that Mr. Gregel took, uh, you know, the, the set's conditions uh, will require some patching, some regrade, uh, set, some patching, some repaving, a lot of restriping, uh, and identifying appropriate spaces where that need be. Uh, that, that's, that's what we mean, is that that's something that's going to have to happen. Because, uh, I think it's become pretty clear from at least what I'm intuiting from the board, that the, the existing condition is unacceptable. Uh, so, you know, that, that's, that's something that, that the applicant will have to make happen.
Uh, see, I just, because I got to get the condition tight enough for somebody to enforce it, does that mean you will abide by whatever the, uh, zoning official directs you to do with respect to the parking lot? Or does that mean you're going to do what you think is enough?
So I, I think that's one where we'll work with and, and whether it's, uh, Janice or, or Mr. Hess's office frankly, uh, one of the two of them, and I'm perfectly fine with it being whom, whichever of those two the board deems uh, more fit to, to make those determinations, uh, that, that the parking lot will be have to, have to be, uh, revised to their satisfaction. Uh, and that will mean repaving areas, restriping areas, uh, patching areas and, and doing what's necessary to bring this portion of the site into compliance.
So if, if this, if the zoning official says to you, I think that the property should be resurfaced, you're going to abide by that?
That, that's an obligation that would exist, yeah. Pro- provided, provided that, that the zoning official is doing that based on, you know, bad site conditions and saying, hey, this needs, this needs to be better, that's what we have to do. Wait, uh, Mr. Klein, I know you've got your hand raised, sorry.
Mr. Klein, go right ahead.
Mr. Hess, do we know if the drainage system is adequate for the parking lot? And do we know if they'll have to add additional inlets or bigger pipes or, or anything, do we know anything about the drainage situation?
Well, they're not proposing any increase in impervious cover and the site currently drained, so I don't think there needs to be any, uh, improvements, uh, but I do think I do think they need to, the parking lot has to be fixed in order to make sure the drainage works and to be able to stripe the parking spaces and, and I think in order for the town to know exactly what's going to happen and when an inspector gets to the site, they know what they're looking at, I think the plans need to show exactly what the improvements are that are proposed to the parking lot.
Well, it sounds like Mr. Hess, you got a job.
And, and I think we're, we're fine with that, Mr. Chairman, if, if the condition of approval is us coordinating and submitting a plan to Mr. Hess to identify those areas.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions, sir?
No questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Smeraldo, do you have any questions?
Yes, sir, I had a couple, um. So before we, I heard testimony about the, uh, the, the doorways and the, and the, um, system that's going to use to keep the, the, the smells within, within the, um, I guess the growing area. When we did our site visit, a couple weeks go down to the other retailer, which was a lot larger, it was a regular room and, um, it was a medicinal, um, marijuana, or I'm sorry, cannabis, um, uh, growing and then they were, they're going to be on to, um, recreational grow also. One of the things they were required to do was they had, um, interlock systems on their doors to help um, keep the odors from emanating from the growing area to throughout the building and emanating out anywhere else. How does the system you're proposing work better or, or as, as good as an interlock system? And if so, do we need to have an interlock system or why not? Can you explain that to me, please?
Uh, yeah, absolutely, so, so, uh, really quickly, uh, Mr. Smor- Smeraldo, I, I left that out. Now, we will have a zero pressure interlock system on our doors as well as, um, our grow rooms. Um, that wasn't something that I highlighted before, um, uh, I, in addition, we will have AC splits to make sure that when the door is open, right? Um, that there is no smell that emanates from the door being open.
Okay, so, and I, and I, uh, because the reason I'm asking this question, and I want to get this on the record, and I'm not speaking on behalf of Councilman Rutherford, but I know that other members of the council have expressed that to me, um, you know, when I was here tonight.
Yeah.
I want to make sure we get on the record that we, you know, we're, we're addressing the odor smell and the operations of it and so if you're going to, you know, you're explaining it, that's what I'd like to know, um, and get on the record.
Also, the charcoal or the filtration system that you talked about, this place that we went to, I said again, um,
very large systems, a very large, and, and it's obviously a larger facility. What is the noise level going to be of these, these units in comparison to a residential neighborhood? Uh, how loud are these going to be? Are they, is there a decibel and anything like that with it?
Yeah, so I, 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 so now, wha- what, I guess I would return that with a question now, what specifically, what units are we talking about now? If we're talking about
Yeah, there was large units out there, there was a filtration system that they had in the, in the building and, um, it was very large systems and it was a very, I, I gotta tell you, from a mechanical standpoint, it was really cool, I, you know, that's my kind of thing, I like those things. Um, and they, and they were very impressive, they worked very well, uh, we did only have smelled one little bit of odor at one point, which was explained to us that on humid days, sometimes the, um, the, um, excess that's being thrown out will give off, off an odor during, um, you know, uh, removal. Uh, but that, that's very rare, um, but the, the rest of the system, it was, there were huge units, they were like big air conditioning units and they were loud. Now, this place was in the middle of a, of a pasture type of thing and there wasn't residents around. What kind of system is it that you're having, you're proposing, are they going to be large systems, they're going to be noisy systems? Because we want to take into account that this, this is close to a, a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, Mr. Smarler, but what I would say also is, you know, listen, I'm not going to make assumptions, but from, from what I heard and, you know, I've, 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 you know, I've I've heard from, you know, a few folks that have went down to that trip, that that's a, a much larger facility of like almost, we're talking about what, ten times the size of what's being proposed?
It was, it was thirty thousand square feet.
Right, right, so we're talking about something almost fifteen times the size of something that's being proposed, right? So now, um, when you look at a facility that's twenty-five hundred square feet and it's in rooms, the way that we're doing our facility, um, we are not going to have a huge, uh, car- filtration system. The carbon filtration systems that I'm talking about actually will be inside of our facility, right? Um, which of course will be powered by our power, but they're inside of our facility, positioned throughout our facility, um, positioned in our flower rooms and outside of our flower rooms to make sure that the smell doesn't emanate and it stops the smell and it's tracked where it's at. So I'm not sure and I can't speak to what, um, that specific operator was utilizing, um, but that, um, we wouldn't have that type of large, um, um, uh, mechanical noise or situation because we're nowhere near the size of, of that facility. I can't speak specifically to that facility, again, I've never been there, but I can say we are, um, we, we are not going to have that and what we've proposed from a generator standpoint, if we ever need to utilize such generator, um, will be within the decimals of what's accepted in the code.
And, and gen- and generators, I, I get that they, they, you go on when it's emergency, so that's just the uh, it's, you know, it's, whatever it's needed, but, so you're saying that your, your, your filtration system is going to be interior, not exterior, so we, we shouldn't hear that, that's, that's what I'm
That's correct, our, all the things that we have e- exterior, you know, like any facility would be our HVAC, right? Where, where would it, would be our, you know, normal HVAC and would be our, um, would be specifically our, um, I'm sorry, our generator for emergency, um, situations, um, but
I'm satisfied with that, I just wanted, I want to make sure we have it on the record so that we, we've addressed it and it was, the, the concerns are, you know, being, uh, heard and that you're, you're answering them to the way that the, you know, to the best of your ability and then providing us with, what it is. Um, so one of the other questions I have for you, because I know it's a requirement in the state that, uh, this place is going to be windowless, uh, for the most part. Um, and the, it's twenty-five hundred square feet of grow, but you have the second floor, so in the state of New Jersey, what, uh, windows, they, technically a windowless basement or windowless type of structure requires sprinklers? So maybe I can ask your architect, is, can you explain to me why or why not, um, there's no, um, sprinklers?
We're, we're getting a little too far off, okay.
Okay.
Parking, let's, let's focus on parking, we'll get through parking and then we're going to go on to the next, okay?
Okay, well, I'm done with the parking then, I'm done with parking, you want the next one?
Standing, thank you.
All right, let's just keep that in the back of your mind, get the answer ready.
Yes, parking, parking only right now, parking.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cadosa? Yeah, uh, Mayor McCartney?
I can wait, John's turn.
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor McCartney.
No, thanks. Uh, I'm just still curious about the testimony that we heard about Park Avenue and Ashland. Can anyone just reaffirm that? And why are we not, are we not using Park Avenue at all?
Uh, Sean, do you want to, uh, bring up the plan with the, the access park?
There, there's, there's, there is physical access from Park Avenue, um, it, it's more of a convenience, it's not going to be u- utilized, um, it, you know, for, let's say, fire, uh, apparatus, right, um, because of, of like, Mr. Mr. Ken said earlier about, uh, narrow drive aisles, um, on, on, on the, in the parking area that is near Park Avenue. So, um, it's basically the, the traffic from Ashland um, into the site is the, going to be the primary, uh, direction, I guess you could say, from, from Ashland. I don't know if that answers your question.
Any employees, will they be using Ashland or Park or, or does it matter?
Yeah, Ma- Mayor McCartney, this is Cameron, I, I, I think I can, I can answer some of your questions.
Thank you.
And so I believe the delivery truck, uh, design and, and circulation plan does show uh, the ability to access from Park, uh, it's not that we wouldn't use Park, it's that for purposes of showing the number of parking spaces and delineating those spaces that are required and the majority of them being, being required under the code. We've worked with, uh, the, the board's professionals to identify and our professionals to identify that the majority of that access is coming off of Ashland, so it's not precluded that they'll be coming off of Park. But for the major, for the, 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 the fire truck and fire access, those access points will be coming off of Ashland.
Thank you, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I, Mr. Chairman, I like to go back then real quick, based on that.
Hey, okay, Mrs. Smeraldo.
So while I asked about the, uh, fire sprinklers and everything inside, we'll get to that later. However, if we discuss that and it does seem to be that we need it, when the fire trucks do When the fire trucks do enter that parking lot, where would we consider, um, would we block that all off? So if in the fact that we get us. A OS and Y, uh, anything in there that we could hook up the sprinkler, we got to make sure that that spot will be reserved. So that's my comment.
The, the, the fire lane spot, you mean, Mr. Smeraldo?
Yeah, well, wherever it's deemed necessary for a hookup. If we, we in fact, you know, discuss that later and, and it's deemed whether we need to or not include that in the building.
So. Something that was in the fire chase letter too. So, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Just want to get that in there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caffrey.
Uh, no questions at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Can you tell me where the seven spots will be for the grow center in the lot? That are, are they specifically identified in the lot that this is where the employees of the grow center will park?
Yes. Bring that up. Right now. These spots right here.
So they will be clearly identified as employee parking?
Correct.
But. Okay, that'll be a condition.
And, and just for, for clarity, those are, those are the spots on the. Can somebody help me out with directions there? Which, which side of the, side of the site that is?
Oh, uh, yeah, that, that was would be the. Well, let's go back to this real quick because we've got that.
I think it's a, I think.
Or it's not really. It's. Southwest or southeast rather, if you want to call it that, if you want to go by cardinal directions.
Southeast.
Correct.
It'll be contiguous with the, uh, electric vehicle charging spot.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Great. Uh, Mr. Hess, do you have any questions?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I have one question. Um. It shows on the plan that. Come, if a vehicle is coming in from Park Avenue. That there are two-way access drives, but then when it intersects the drive. In front of the proposed parking spaces. It's one way heading towards Park Avenue. Are, are you going to put a do not enter sign or how are you going to control conflicts at that area? Maybe you could put up site one and we could see the, uh. See the issue.
Now, I mean, I guess I would have to defer to make sure that we can put something like that on, on the other property. Um, it's not really open to the public. So the only those people. Being that it's not our, like, uh, sp- spaces that would be accessed by your Kana. Um. You know, we're proposing that delivery vans. Let me get to that one right here. So. You know, a delivery vehicle could access either Ashland or Park and there's enough room to, to, to go this way. Um, through the, through the area, if that makes sense.
Right. But now you've got, you've got it marked for one-way traffic. So you're creating a conflict point.
Oh, right here you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, Sean, but I, I think you're talking at the intersection.
Sorry, I thought I had my shares, my screws here, my, my volume. Um, let me make sure. I'm with you on the same page here. Okay. So, um. I'm sorry, where, where the question is?
By the two compact spaces. That you're proposing.
Oh, okay.
You're showing a one-way arrow heading towards Park Avenue. But yet coming from Park Avenue, you're showing two-way traffic. So how are we going to avoid a conflict?
As they're.
One-way drive intersects the, uh, the two-way.
I got you. I believe there's a, there's probably enough space for two, to be honest with you. I think that was an oversight. Um. I, I think it could go two-way. I, I don't have my. Um, I would have to dimension that out and see, but we could actually probably fit two, two arrows there.
If you're looking to make it two-way, then we need to have some dimensioning of the aisles. Shown on the plan. If, if you don't have enough aisle width, then we need some way to control it to avoid conflicts.
I see. So the other, the other option could be to put a do not enter sign here and then, then that's resolved, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, I agree.
Have you worked that with the engineer before the final plans? We'll make a condition, that a condition.
Yeah, I know. Well, how am I calling that? The traffic path, if there's two-way traffic, one way will be worked out with the township engineer?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that okay, Mr. Hess?
No, that sounds fine.
Good.
Okay. Mr. Klein then, Mayor McCartney.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, uh, put that back. I'm sorry. That, that was my issue all along that. Hmm. The, the tightness between those parking spaces, the, the first version. Had numbers on them. So I could tell you they were between fifteen and sixteen numbered parking spaces. See that, that tight area down the, uh, right across in the words, lot thirty-two. Go to your left, right there. That's one way at best, if it's even one way.
Right.
So are you, are you, you're gonna, are you going to be able to get rid of one of those spaces to make it twenty-four feet? Are you going to make it one way around there? It. Right. It seems a little messed up that, that it's got, this is a chance to clean this up and make it work right.
Yeah, being on the other properties, um, we're just dealing with, you know, existing conditions at this point. And so definitely putting up a, um. A, a do not enter, uh, sign is probably the easiest solution as Mr. Hess suggested. So, uh.
Well, then.
I think that would go ahead and solve the, the, the issue there.
Well, then the do not enter creates like a dead end. So how do I turn around if I go down that end and there's no parking for me? I gotta make a K turn somehow.
Right. You've got enough space between the back of the parking.
But I don't know that because there's no dimensions on this plant. That's my problem. We didn't need, need to see some dimensions on a site plan. That's what it needs to show.
Well, lot thirty-two is also part of the application.
Yeah, I, I, I think perhaps that perhaps the other solve here is that, that, that driveway to the left. Uh, Sean. Uh, if you. That one there, uh, that, that becomes an exit only. And that I think. Provided that the dimensioning works. And Mr. Klein will defer to your, your, certainly your expertise in this, this, Mr. Hess yours too. Um, um, you know, it. I think the dimensioning we looked at last time showed there was enough room. For the access from, in the right-hand access. It's that left-hand one of that narrow, that, that pinch point that doesn't work.
So right hand goes in, left hand goes out.
I know absolutely nothing about traffic engineering, but it sounds like a great idea to me.
But, but just show us some dimensions that we see that you've got twenty-four feet. From where that one-way arrow that's going to become a two-way arrow right under lot twenty-two oh one. That's going to become two-way. All the way until you get to a point where it's going to set, you can go out the left side of the drawing. You're going to come in and out the right side. And again, if there are dimensions, I'll be able to see that that's eighteen twenty-four, eighteen, eighteen twenty-four.
Yep. Understood. Okay.
And then I don't know if I'm allowed to bring this up, but. I want, I would like to have seen. The parking for lot thirty-two. And twenty-two oh one and whatever numbers the other ones are to show that. You're, there's no shared parking between lot thirty-two. And your lot or vice versa. That, that the numbers, are they independent? Are they one big lot? What, where's the parking for lot thirty-four?
Yeah, I mean. Go ahead, Sean, please.
I was, yeah, I was just going to say like, we've, we've identified by marking each parking space. We've numbered them one through forty-eight. Um, for the ones that are on our lot. Um. So they're, they're numbered. Here. On every single space.
Plus the, yeah, including three on the street, which, okay.
Correct.
Uh, so Mr. Hess, I mean, should they, do anybody follow me on the third, lot thirty-two thing where? How do I know? I know lot, I, I see where lot thirty-two ends and I see where lot thirty-four begins. And we're twenty-two oh one, but how, do I, do we, I guess? Do we not care whether there's enough parking on thirty-two, thirty-four, twenty-two oh one and whatever the other numbers are? Yeah, we just care about this one?
I think part of the confusion is that the application itself. Included. Lots twenty-two oh one, thirty-two and thirty-four. But the parking. calculation is only based on the parking on lot twenty-two oh one. So. That, that it gets confusing because it, it's inconsistent.
Alright. Alright.
Okay. So you guys, you're going to have to work it out with the engineer. It has to be acceptable to Mr. Hess. Right now it sounds like lot thirty-two is in. The, the lot that is closer to the building is out. Now, how do you get from lot thirty-two or the next lot to twenty-two oh one, the entrance to the building? Is there a walkway?
This is all paved. It, all of it's.
So there's no, there's no fencing there. There's just going to be a do not enter sign where it says lot twenty-two oh one going into lot thirty-two. That's do not enter. So somebody parking in lot thirty-two can walk over to lot twenty-two oh one. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's no physical barrier there. That's correct.
Okay. So I think everything else needs to be worked out with the engineer. All of these lot, all of these. Uh, parking spaces need to be numbered. So we have a better idea of exactly what's going on, including the three spots on the street. So it ma- it makes it clear to anybody who's looking at these plans. Does that make sense, Mr. Hess? Mr. Klein?
Yeah, they do have the lots numbered, uh, they do have the spaces numbered on. On, uh. Lot twenty-two oh one and also.
Right, but not on lot thirty-two.
Towards Ashland Avenue, right?
Right.
Uh, the question is, should we really be looking at the spaces on lot thirty-two? Uh, to be honest, I'm not sure why that's part of the application.
Right, lot thirty-two and thirty-four. Are only proposed for access purposes, not parking.
Okay, but, but if you, if you're proposing it for access, then you still have to have the dimensions that Mr. Klein said.
Right, right.
Right? So the dimensions of the five aisles need to be there. Okay?
Can, can somebody testify that? Lot thirty-two has its own self-contained parking and lot thirty-four has its own self-contained parking? And now twenty-two oh one has its own, except for three on the street? And therefore there's no cross-access easement, uh, cross-accent, yes, but not cross for parking usage?
Right. Um. The, the purpose of the variant, you know, Mr. Klein is to make sure that there's no need for cross-parking. Uh, from twenty-two oh one to the other spaces. As to cross, I know that there was something in, I think it was the fire chase memo. Again, I, I might be off there, but I think it was the fire chase memo. Requesting that there be, uh, some kind of access confirmed, whether by virtue of the declaration, in easement. Uh, what have you that guarantees the access, uh, out to, uh, go to cross lot thirty-four? And, you know, that's something that, that if the board were to put that as a, as a condition of approval, it's something we can, we can figure out how to get memorialized.
Alright, and then you are proposing. Enter only off of Ashland. And then two-way access off of Park. So nobody can drive out onto Ashland, whether it's an employee. Right?
Hmm.
Except for that little pod of forty through, thirty-nine through forty, whatever, that parking. That has, that's its own parking and its own driveway.
Right.
Sean, I guess we're building, building seventy-eight or nine, whatever it is, hard to see. Yeah. Architects need to use larger fonts on their plans. Found that in my experience.
Okay, are we, uh? Do we, are we all agreed on how this is going to work out in the plan before we memorialize this, Mr. Hess? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I just have a question. They have to number the parking spaces physically on the lot or just on the plan?
On the plan.
Okay, not on the lot.
They have lots, they have the spaces numbered on.
They are numbered. Yeah, I'm, I'm a little confused. I'm not sure what, what, all these spaces are numbered and they're all on lot twenty-two oh one and they're. All in the parking. Requirements. I, maybe I'm unclear what, what the issue is.
Well, it's, it's because another lot was brought into the picture and we're talking about circulation in the lot. So you guys brought it in, not us. That's what we're asking.
I understand.
Open the door and we threw it. But I, 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 I think we've heard enough and I think the engineer. The engineers can make this make sense. Yes?
Uh, yeah, we agree, Mr. Chairman. The, the one thing I'll clarify is that, uh, I, I think that the. The, the access issue might have been in an earlier version of Mr. Hess's letter. Uh, and I think it's, it's not reflected in the, the fire letter. And I think it's because the fire access doesn't leave twenty-two oh one. Um, so I'll, I'll just retract my comment about the, the access out to Park on the fire side of things.
Okay. Okay, uh, do any members of, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Keller, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to miss you. Ms. Keller, do you have any questions?
It's okay. Um, no, I think my questions are more, um, well, if. If, if I, if we're talking about the upper floor, is this the right time to ask about that? Cause it's, as it relates to parking?
Um. Okay, go for it.
Okay, let me just try. Okay. So I just want to, so I know we've talked about the empty space on the upper floor and, you know, but my, just, just to clarify. That, that area, you know, if anything were to go there, it would have to come before the board. But if any, if any type of cannabis use were to expand there, that would, that would not be permitted. That would be a violation of the license, right? So that's one way that there's a control on it.
Hmm, that, that is, that is correct. We cannot operate outside of the twenty-five hundred square feet because we are a micro business license, licensed by the Cannabis Regulatory Commission.
Okay, so, so that's, you know, typically, you know, the board, boards, it's, it's tough to control what's going on inside the building. Um, and since that's where the parking is what, what the parking is related to, I think that that's, that's, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. So. You cannot expand that without fully changing your license and would have to come back to this board and do all kinds of other things. So, okay.
I would have to go to the state first and then.
Exactly, exactly. Hmm, thank you. That's it for me. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Do any members of the public have any questions?
I still had a question.
I'm sorry, uh, Mayor McCartney.
Thank you. Sorry. But it, it goes all the way back to that screen where we had the, uh, the question that you asked about. Um, the employee parking, that blue strip there? There was a comment made. Uh, I just wrote in my notes that that was, that would be northeast of the building and there was a comment made that it was. Southwest.
The applicant, the applicant, the applicant will make sure we have the right deno- uh, uh, connotation, denotations.
Alright. I believe it should be northeast.
Okay.
The ones closest to the building.
Yeah. The applicants want to market, let us know.
That's the easiest way to describe it.
I'm gonna, I'll bring my compass next time. Thank you, Mayor. Do any members of the public have any questions for this, uh, expert? Do any members of the public have any questions? About parking only for this expert? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, I see a hand. Oh, we have Councilwoman Castellino. On.
Okay.
I'm going to allow her to talk.
Go right ahead.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Good evening, everyone. How are, how's everybody doing?
Good evening, Councilwoman Castellino. Welcome.
Thank you. So I just had a quick question, just watching all this, because it's, it was a while back when we had the cannabis task force meeting, which I was the only. Member of the council, uh, who was a part of that and, and. Uh, congratulations to James for getting this far this evening. You know, it's been a long road and, and very tedious, but we want to, you know, make sure we get this right. Uh, so just, just from what I'm seeing tonight, I just want a clarification. Coming into the lot, you can only go in on Ashland. Uh, out on Park, there is a way to go in on Park as well. Reason why I state this is. When, uh, we were looking at the approvals and something I had requested, uh, during the process was that any, any trucks with product. Uh, could not come in on Ashland or go out on Ashland. And, um, it appears that I guess. Everything would go out from, that's manufactured out through Park. Is that a correct statement? Okay, reason being with the park. Yeah, Lafayette Park being there and then you have a, a bus stop with the apartment building full of children. That was the concern.
So, so just really quickly, um, uh, Councilwoman Castellino, uh, thank you for joining and clarifying. Um, the purpose of the Ashland, uh, entrances for emergency vehicles, um, deliveries. Um, as well as product will be coming out of the park entrance.
And, and going in as well, right? If anything had to go in, but.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Just to be clear, we would never be getting product delivered to us, just to.
I didn't think so, but I just wanted clarification.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
If McGovern, you'll put that in the conditioning, please? Thank you. Do any, thank you, Councilwoman. Do any other members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Not seeing anyone yet.
Seeing none. Thank you very much. Mr. McLeod, you're up.
I'm so, I'm, I'm sorry. I got.
Mr. Klein.
If you go to his, go to site six, site six is a Sprinter van. The Sprinter van's entering from Ashland and exiting out the park. Is that correct? And is that allowable?
Hmm.
Now, didn't we just say it's going to enter on?
Mark, enter and exit.
Maybe it's, maybe it's backwards and maybe it's, so then, okay, so. The arrow's pointing in, but I think the front wheels are tilted. So I think it's showing it going out, Ashland. It, or. I don't.
Now, we just agree with.
Look at site six. Please bring up site six. I'm, I'm getting frustrated. I'm sorry, but I've just got to see what's going on here.
Yeah, Sean, Sean.
I think it can do it. It's just at that temperature. That, that shows what? Tell me what that shows. Tell me what that shows.
This here shows the delivery van. Um, traveling. Uh, this is, this is coming from Ashland. Going to the space. Backing out and then exiting out Park Avenue.
Miss, Miss Castellino, is that correct? Is that acceptable?
I think she just.
She's already had her time.
But she just said, oh, no.
Anybody, anybody pay attention to what she was saying?
I did. I took notes. I took notes. And it was deliveries and product movement. Uh, out of the facility would be by Park exit only.
Right, and Sean, Sean, it could access.
Come in or uh, and definitely not go out with product.
Right. And Sean, there's enough space for it to come. In and out of Park as well, correct?
Correct.
We're showing that dimension on this plan.
So, so it's, so the, alright, so then the only one way, which again, I don't know why it is, if it's. Why is it one-way? Why is it a one-way driveway from Ashland in? Why is that one-way? Is it too narrow to be two-way?
Yes. Right, Sean, the, the width of the entranceway from Ashland.
Right, has to be one-way and has to be one-way. It could be in or out. Okay, fine.
Right.
So there's not, so where would the do not enter sign be? I'm lost again.
No more. You can't have a do not enter sign, cause it's gotta come in and out of Park.
Right, exactly.
Gotta go from the, right. There we go. Thank you.
I think if, if there's to be, if, if there's to be a, a, a one-way, a, a do not enter sign, uh, Mr. Klein, I think it's going to come in to. The left driveway on Park, just because of that pinch point that we talked about.
And then there's gotta be do not enter signs where the, the Sprinter van is located just as it, it. I wish I could point to, but where it says, yeah, right there. That's got, come a little further to your left. There's gotta be do not enters there, cause you, you can't go out that way.
You can't go out that way.
You gotta, so where that fence is, it's gotta be do not enters.
Correct.
Where the fences, okay. So you can come in Ashland, you can't go back out Ashland. They can come in Park and out Park. So that one-way arrow by the lot twenty two oh one has to be two, two ways. And then you gotta prove to me that, I, I don't know how you're gonna do it, but all right. You can't get rid of the, you're not gonna fix lot thirty four's. Problem with parking. You could, you could just shift those spaces all the way against building number thirty four. And that might solve the whole friggin' problem, but what do I know?
Chairman. I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Some, Michelle Castellino is, has her hand up again.
Come on in, Michelle Castellino.
Okay, hang on.
Thank you.
Oh, I think that might have been by accident. She's gone again. Sorry. Okay, that's fine.
So I know it's not your lot, but you could fix lot thirty four, that driveway by taking those spaces that are double stacked on thirty two, thirty four. And move them over to thirty four and that would probably widen up that roadway, that, that aisle way.
Yeah, so, so I think, Mr., uh, Mr. Chairman, I think this is one where if we can, if, if we can. We'll show, we'll show where the twenty-four, the twenty-four foot drive aisles are. If there's not an acceptable twenty-four foot uh, drive aisle, then. That we'll have to, we'll have to put up a one-way, a one-way uh, sign on that portion of thirty four.
Okay, as long as, as long as you work that out with the uh, engineer, that's fine.
Yeah, Mr. Hess will, will, will work that with you.
Okay, do any other members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified. Seeing none. Next, Mr. McLeod, you're up.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think, uh, really just tracking back to Mr. Huss's uh, letter, there were, there were a couple of other things in here I just wanted to touch, touch on briefly. Uh, with Mr. Fisher. Uh, one relates to uh, the, the landscaping beds on the site. Uh, Sean, I think one of your sheets, and I'm gonna muck up your numbers here, but I think it's site two. Uh, does describe uh, four foot over vayday, right? As the proposed meeting there? Um. And I think you also had an, had a, had a with particular. Uh, on the bottom of sheet five. Uh. Pullouts for those, right? Landscaping notes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, as to, as to number twenty one, I know, Mr. Hess, I don't know if you want us to address this, but we will anyway. Uh, the, the uh, monitoring wells that presently exist on the site. Uh, I know you'd mentioned that those were closed. Uh, I don't believe there are monitoring wells to close. Uh, but if that's something that, that the owner wanted to close, I think that's something they'd have to, they'd have to coordinate with whomever their mediating party is. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I would, I would ask that you talk to him and see if he's willing to uh. To eliminate them since they're no longer needed.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely talk to him about it. Um, I think with the rest of that, the, the, the lighting comment and whatnot, we're, we're happy to accommodate. Um, so I think with that, Sean, you've got something else you wanna hit. That concludes my testimony for you. Or your testimony for us, not mine for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
All right, uh, Mr. Chairman, then I'd ask, uh, Alex Doherty, uh, to uh, step up and grab the mic. Uh, Alex is a professional planner, uh, and. Here to, here to discuss briefly the, the justifications for the parking variances that we're requesting relative to the parking that we just ran through. So, uh, Alex, you're not yet sworn, so I'll ask Ms. McGovern to do her honors.
Hey, where are you, Alex?
Moving here.
Oh, okay. Um, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please put your name on the record.
Alexander Doherty. Last name is D O U G H E R T Y.
Thank you.
And Alex, can you give the board just the quick benefit of your education expertise and licensure, please?
Certainly. My education at a Rutgers Ploughstein with a master's in city regional planning. And a concentration in development, redevelopment studies with a certification in public policy. My license are current in good standings, uh, PP as well as national AICP. I testify as capacity on a weekly and daily basis. Um, I believe it's my first time in front of the West Orange Planning Board, uh, but I have been accepted in front of the zoning board, uh, several times.
Okay, uh, ladies and gentlemen, the board, unless anybody has any questions, or Mr. Doherty will accept him as a licensed planning estate in New Jersey. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Alex, uh, just if you could, uh, briefly, I know you've got an exhibit that kinda walks through the, the, the area of the site. Uh, and can, can, you know, kind of inform the board as to the two parking variances that, that we're proposing. Uh, if you could walk those, through those two exhibits and then also walk through your, your planning testimony, uh, much appreciated.
Certainly. So the site is fairly, uh, unique, um, within itself. Um, it's a fairly large site. Uh, again, we have, um, as you know, it's been indicated several times, um, multiple structures located on the site, um, which kind of, um. Plays into the parking variance, uh, collectively, um, where, where we believe we satisfy the parking, uh, requirement. Um, by, by virtue of the condition and, and the overall site itself here. Um, the fact this is a micro, uh, um, cannabis, um, grow facility. It, it's limited as, um, the board planner indicated, um, by state regulations, it can't get any bigger than what's proposed. Uh, with that being said, um, so the parking requirement itself, um, as we kinda had the, um, you know, uh. Discussion related to the floor plan, um, it can't occupy the whole building. So your parking requirement really is hooked on the building footprint, um, and, and in the floor area, if you will. Um, we have a, a building that meets the need, um, while leaving some dead space. Um, as the architectural plan showed, uh, by the color orientation of, of the floor plan, you know, in that. Overall collective, uh, um, square footage accounts for hallways, staircases and so forth. Um, and, and as council opened up, uh, we, we noticed on these variances at, um, by way of caution. Um, collectively, the site is a fairly large site with multiple principal buildings, um, some of which are vacant. Um, with that being said, we don't know what the future holds tenant-wise. Uh, this application is, is, is here before you first. Um, with that, uh, we believe we have the parking we need, uh, for the use itself, uh, by state law, as it was testified earlier. Um, for the micro grow facilities, uh, ten, ten employees is all that is permitted. Uh, two hundred, um, twenty-five hundred square feet is the max the grow facility can be. Uh, so by virtue of the size of the property, we believe we meet that condition. Um, but there are other structures on the, the property. So to account for what could be there. Uh, we are, um, you know, asking for some, some parking, uh, relief, um, based off of the existing buildings that are there. Uh, where the site itself would need fifty-two, we're at forty-eight. Um, but by virtue of the use itself, um, and the size of the, of, of the site, we, we meet the parking requirement, which is why it's in front of this board. Um, and, and, and not the zoning board by virtue of a condition. With that being said. The, the notion of this parking variance, if you will, um, discrepancy of four. We don't know what the future tenants will be of the other, of the other properties. And what's nice about this property, I'm sorry, this particular project, uh, in this particular building is. With the ten employees max, we, the way this operation, um, you know, works. You're not gonna have all-in-all employees there at the same time. There's, there's two shifts here. So, um, though. The parking is a deficit of four, we believe we'll have ample parking to accommodate future tenants of, of the site. Um, and, and the other structures. At the same time, we believe we actually meet the actual parking demand for this particular use. That will not cause a, an impact of, of the surrounding area or, or the negative, uh, uh. Uh, parking felt in demand for what that future tenant may hold. Um, i- if it pleases the board, I'll share my screen. We'll kinda walk through, um, the, uh, existing conditions onsite. Um, and we'll go into it. A little bit more in detail relating to the parking and the variances and, and justification.
So Alex, very, very quickly, before you do that, this is not, uh, submitted ahead of time. Uh, this exhibit had asked to be marked as, I think, A one, uh, for purposes this evening. And Alex, if you can tell the board what this package is, it looks like it's a seven-page set.
Certainly. So it's a seven-page slide, um, consisting of just maps and photographs, drone photos that I took myself, uh, this past Friday. Um, I personally like to visit, uh, every site that I testified to and, and the surrounding neighborhood. Um, so this, this slide deck here, exhibit A one, um, is prepared by myself. And it's, uh, the first two slides are maps and then, and, uh, the rest, the, the remaining five are, are photographs of, of the property and the overall surroundings. Slide one, uh, outlined in red. With the red arrow is a, actually right where the property is located, uh, a circle of the I for industrial. This is the, uh, industrial zone. Um, as you can see, the hard, uh, um. A black line there. That's also the municipal boundary, um, as this particular, uh, area of butts, uh, the city of Orange. Um, so we're kinda on the fringe of, of the West Orange municipality, but you know, we're nestled, you know, perfectly within the, uh, industrial zone. Um, by way of the zone itself. And, and the way this property situates within the zone, it's a unique site. Um, slide two is in a, 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 a map, if you will, from NJDP's GeoWeb. Outlined in red is the property in question. It's fairly, it's, it's fairly unique. Uh, we have, again, multiple structures on the property. Um, it's an industrial zone. And, uh, we kinda have this, this L shape, if you will, to it. Uh, with that, it lends itself. Unique, this particular building, uh, because it's, it's nestled right in the middle of. By way, typically you'll see buildings up on the, uh, the street, the streetscape. This is kinda tucked away in the back, making it more than ideal for, uh, cannabis grow facility. Uh, security measures in, in that regards, kind of out of the radar, a- a- out of sight, out of mind. A very, very unique site, um, certainly very suitable for this, uh, particular type of operation. And given the, the size and scale of the building, uh, more than enough, um, adequate space for the, uh, micro grow facility. Um, slide three and, and, and going through seven are drone shots that I took. So this is. Uh, an aerial drone shot elevated, um, kind of looking at. This, the structure itself, uh, from Park, uh, in the parking lot, just this elevated above it. So. That's about what you'll see from the public realm, uh, coming, um, from Park. Um, currently, we ha- we do have a gate, it's closed off. As, uh, many members know. You know, the site is, is, is messy. It's, it's unattractive. Um, it, it's, it's an industrial zone. Um, but at the end of the day, what you see here now is just a, a mesh gate, uh, with the, kind of that industrial structure poking above. Um, as we've heard, you know, the, this is the proposed, um, access for, uh, you know, the delivery van and, but this is the one-way coming out here, which. Works well with the seven parking stalls, uh, um, that are particularly needed for the use itself here, located right in front of the structure. Um, so it, we have kind of a inadvertently some site organization, if you will. Um, having the parking stalls located next to the structure while the remaining of the site and, and, and the, the parking requirements. You, you know, more affiliated with the, the other structures. This is a, a drone shot. We kinda go, uh, into the site a little bit. As we see, we do have, um, some pavement here. It's been quite some time since it's been cleaned. It's an industrial zone, industrial site, a lot of debris, a lot of dirt, rubble. Um, you know, it's, it's not really a site we see manicured and taken care of. So we do, we do have some, some heavy machinery back here, some trucks, as we've heard, um, council, uh, testified to. Uh, the plan is to clean this up. Paint it, patch it, resurface it, stripe it. Um, so a lot of this is gonna go away, um. You know, cleaning up this, these site elements. Again, better organization. Right now, that's not the case here. This will all go away. We take a, a, a top, top, uh, down drone shot, if you will, um, so we can kinda see some of, uh. The existing conditions and, and, and the built environment here, fairly large in the back. Uh, where majority of the parking is, is to be located and that one-way drive aisle coming through the site and leaving again through Park. Um, so this is all to be cleaned up. Uh, with, we, uh, we have more than adequate room to accommodate, um, per the board's, uh, engineer. Um, you know, to fine-tune any concerns that many members may have about circulation and, and the measurements. Um, given the physical built environment, uh, I, I believe it could work. We have plenty of room here. We have dumpsters, freight containers. There are access in the site. They're turning around the mobility, the circulation plan. Um, you know, I, it's working there. Uh, you know, I, I certainly believe it could work for some, uh, compact cars and, 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 and versus the heavy machinery. Again, um, that is all to be fine-tuned, um, with the board engineer. You kinda take a step back and get an overall, um, shot of the site itself. As we can see here, um, there's ample parking on street throughout the neighborhood, uh, West Orange as well as Orange. Uh, we have, you know, lot thirty two, lot thirty four, as, 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 you know, uh, spoken about before, with their parking arrangements up front. And, and from here, we can kinda see some of the multiple structures that we have on site. That I, that I was referencing that the board is, uh, already familiar with. Um, the building in the foreground, the long building here, running, uh, a back, uh, uh, abutting via. The other industrial building and some of these, uh, um, smaller, uh, structures. Uh, building seventy-six, if you will, it's currently vacant. So again, we are the first one here. Uh, we, we do satisfy the parking. It's un, unknown what this will be. And again, the parking requirements. The way we see it in the way it's written, the way it's intended is, you know, the square footage, um, to accommodate, you know, the industrial use and office use and so forth. Um, this, this facility can't grow, so the demand for parking will be limited. This is not an operation that's open to the public. Uh, by way of, uh, an intensity, uh, you know. Trip generation is not a seven eleven. This isn't a Dunkin' Donuts. There's no need for more parking than what we're proposing for this operation. Given the fact that this is an industrial site overall, with that forty-eight parking, uh, onsite. Again, very rarely do you see, uh, industrial uses and industrial sites open to the public by way of a, a business-to-consumer kind of relation. Um, that's not to say that isn't impossible. We don't know what that future tenant would hold. Um, but in my, my professional, uh, experience, I don't really see that too often. So by virtue of the site itself, building seventy-six is currently vacant. As we have this application in front of you, uh, there are some other structures here on Ashland. This is the drive aisle coming in from Ash, Ashland Avenue. Uh, as we see, we do have some, um, detached residential here as well, associated with the property. Again, their parking as outlined. Um, on, on the set of plans is, you know, the parking customary closest to those structures. So again, we do have some site organization as we seal, as we can see the built environment coming in off Ashland. Um, building seventy-six also has, um, parking associated with it in the front. And again, the, the middle area here, uh, depending on what that use would be, um, would, would customarily be, probably be associated with that. Uh, I think it'd be a, a, a good, um, a good guess to say that that internal parking would be affiliated with building seventy-six. And whatever that future may hold for it and any overflow parking. Again, we do also have that on-street parking as, as also referenced for three of those, uh, parking requirements. Overall collectively. Overall collectively, um. This application by way of parking, though we, you know, the circulation is 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 important. Um it it's kind of one of those uses where. Those that work here will be familiar with the site, those that come here by way of picking up. Product and leaving will be familiar with the site. This is not your typical operation where um you you're gonna see a lot of uh. Third-party deliveries coming here for pickup that are familiar with it, this is heavily regulated um. Operations and 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 inefficiencies and security or everything. By way of this application collectively, the parking requirement falls under the the C two. We could argue a C one, given the built environment itself, um but collectively the C two, the benefits of the application as a whole. Substantially outweigh the detriments. I don't see substantial detriments related to the deviation of of the parking. Uh I see a lot of positive, a lot of positive um with this application. By just the existing conditions being cleaned up itself. From a planning standpoint, favored by planners, the adaptive reuse of existing buildings and structures, um that's what we have here. And it's unique, as I stated earlier, that this structure is kind of in the middle of the industrial zone, kind of nestled. In the back, away from the public realm, away from um that curb appeal. That you see a lot of the existing buildings, you know, kind of hug that curb line, this is off in the back by itself, is not open to the public. We have, you know, um as as testified to, measures in place, state-of-the-art measures, I would add. Uh for for noise, for smells, for odors. Um and again, the fact that it's nestled in the middle, kind of surrounded by larger massing. Um you know, I I do think it boasts extremely well for a micro grow facility. Uh with that, uh I do want to emphasize again that our parking. You know, we have ten employees max by state law, there may not even be ten employees that will work here. Um certainly not all at once, uh multiple shifts. Uh the parking demand that we're seeking, uh uh again, I I really do not see a detriment. By way of positive, I think this application advances purpose of Miss Bolani's law, purpose A, G, I, and M. Particularly purpose I by virtue of cleaning up the site. We do have residential sprinkled around uh onsite across the street. This this application um brings not only this organization. Um but it also cleans this up, brings organization by way of removing this eyesore, striping it. Um and and putting uh a permitted use within the zone. Um from a planning standpoint, I think the board can um rest assured and look upon this application favorably. That any concerns that they may have by noise, again, this is an industrial zone, odor, state of the art, it has. Higher scrutiny of compliance at a state regulation for the CRC. Um any of your concerns the states have, and 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 they're on top of that. Um as we as we kind of went in a conversation earlier, um a facility nearly fifteen times the size. Um with slight odor. I mean, that's impressive. This this particular size, I think, will be over-engineered by odor and 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 in that regards. As the operator testified to, each of these will be kind of encapsulated themselves. Um we certainly do not want to draw attention to this particular uh use, which is why it's not open to the public. Which is why security measures aren't going to be discussed publicly. This operation is 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 something that is looked over, multiple layers. Any of the concerns the boards have is already been addressed by state regulations and just by operation. Um so access to the site. Uh I think it boasts well for the one-way in, one-way out. As 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 we've been discussing, and by virtue of the site itself, um the 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 parking requirement here. We 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 meet actual demand. Uh what's Building seventy six holds uh for use, I don't think is is really um something that. Would would impact the parking demand going forward for a planning purposes in in consideration of what that negative impact may look like. Um that future is is unknown, typically an industrial site is more of outside storage or or larger vehicles. In that regards, so whatever the internal uh portion of the site needs. Um by way of accessing off of park, but clearly leaving only uh on park. Um these seven stalls for the immediate use itself, I believe have adequate parking and adequate access to to operate this facility. With no detriment, um and by way of the uh intent of the zone plan. Um we, you know, during my initial review, um I did see some language in the um the zoning.
Alex, it's Cameron. Yeah, that's where I was gonna ask you just to take a quick look and and just touch really quickly on on the 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 planner memo. Uh from Mr. Gagel's office and namely, uh just confirm for me two quick things, one. We've satisfied all the conditional use standards for this use, so this is functionally a permitted use in the zone.
Correct, yes. Um by virtue of the the, like I said, if we didn't satisfy the conditions, we would not be in front of the planning board. Um this would be looked at as a D three. Um this is a is C two, given that the site is so large and, you know, for the parking requirements that we need, we have that. I believe collectively, um the the other conditions, uh we don't come into play, uh does not come into play. It should be located five hundred feet from the property line um with the house of worship. We we don't have that issue here. You know, with the school building, we do not have that issue here.
Yep, yep. So so and and then just to clarify for for the parking standard. With regard to any future expansion within the upper floor of the building, as we've discussed kind of on and on. Uh this variance would not allow us access to that space for for use purposes, we'd have to come back to to address that. But from your from your professional planning perspective, the parking that we've shown on the site plans is suitable and appropriate. For the combination of uses that we know about on 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 uh lot twenty-two oh one as it stands today, correct?
Correct, and and by virtue of of the license itself, as testified by the operator, um. If if they were to expand, they would need a whole new license at the state level. So and 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 your planner had mentioned it as well, that is, that is. Dead space, it's 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 expensive dead space, it can't be used by local ordinance and it can't be used by state ordinance. So. They found a building that is oversized, which is a rarity in most uh commercial and retail industrial sites, usually they're busting out at the seams. This particular uh application in this structure and this lot itself, um I I believe has more than enough room for this this particular use.
Great, perfect. Alex, thank you. Um Mr. Chairman, that that's all I've got for for our professional planning testimony. Uh as the as the C variance is requested, I I uh kick it back to you, sir.
Okay, uh we'll start at the bottom again. Uh Ms. Capra, do you have any questions?
Um no questions at this time, thanks.
Mr. Cardos, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cardos. Mr. Meraldo, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Meraldo. Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Klein, do you have any questions?
Did he say something about one-way access?
Yes.
What what did you mean by one-way access, Mr. Darty?
So off of Ashland. Uh coming in, the one-way access off of Ashland, I think, um when we look at the multiple uses on the site, um. And when we look at park, as we as we discussed, a delivery van can come in that direction and and also given those. This site organization of the seven stalls in the front, you know. If there is an access point there by virtue of the engineering, um you know, that. This whole turnaround, that internal site could be simply utilized utilized better for seventy-six. Um but the internal um flow of the the property itself, I think from a physical standpoint of what's out there today. Um has more than adequate room um to accommodate the uh. Right in front of the structure itself where the seven parking stalls are, and 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 again, as I mentioned, the van coming in off of park. Co- comes in that way, so that little section coming out of a park, it's kind of, you know, these res- uh the these uh uh employees. That utilize this site, they're, it's not open to the public, so they have that that local knowledge, that familiar, um. You know, way of the land, if you will, and again, it's a two-shift operation. Uh so I think when we look at that circulation there and and that issue, I think um uh we have more than um. A low-intensity use and and ample room to kind of accommodate. Um those those employees that would come in that direction and the rest of the site, as they would come in Ashland. You know, they they would come in there and and park there and they could still leave uh coming through park.
You don't think there's gonna be a problem with a future tenant in seventy-six being some sort of an industrial use, having to go through. This property, whatever you wanna call it, this pe- portion of the property to get out to Park Avenue, because it's one-way circulation.
So seventy-six is unique because it's got parking also right in front of it as well for those immediate employees, so I think, you know, what. May manifest going forward is, you know, we we may be over um, you know, overlooking this, but. That this is an industrial site, um we may not need all of that parking, that may be storage of of industrial. We don't know what that use is gonna be yet, but by way of circulation, um industrials facilities typically, my experience, um. You know, aren't really open to the public, so those that would be accessing the internal, you know, uh core of the site. Of they'd have that local knowledge and 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 interaction by way, so I think by keeping this a one-way. Um we have to re- remember that this is not open to the public, those that would work here would know the 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 lay of the land, I don't think they would be.
I get, and my question, I guess, was. Without seventy-six being occupied. This, this user is gonna come in Ashland or in and out Park Avenue and go out Park Avenue. But in the future, if seventy-six gets populated with some sort of user, industrial user, they're only gonna be able to come in Ashland. And come out park. And is that gonna be a problem? Mixing the the traffic from the seventy-six user with the the user of of this building.
So if I'm sharing my screen. We have that parking in front, so I think a lot of of, you know, let's say employee parking or, you know, uh. In and out of whatever this particular future user would be, would most likely be affiliated there.
Okay.
Um so as far as um in and out is concerned, they'll still have access out from this particular parking lot here. But to access the 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 core of the site, i- this is a one-way between these houses, so. Whose ever comes back here, they'll they'll know, because by way of signage and so forth, you know, do not enter one-way, you know, uh. They'll have to come out this way, and you know, given this is uh all collectively one site, you know. In the striping and so forth, I I don't see an issue, and and again, I know we discussed by way of uh accessing it, uh uh um um going through the. The the board engineer and the town engineer, that this that this will be fine-tuned to his liking and his specification. Um you know, so I I personally don't think there would be an issue, I think typically what we may see going forward. If I had to uh, you know, put. You know, put a bet out there, I think we we wouldn't possibly see this more as a storage facility uh for an industrial use.
But that that was my point, just. It now, it's now going to matter what goes into the seventy-six building. Yep, it's not gonna be these big trucks anymore, because they're only gonna be able to exit through. The area that's being occupied by this user out to Park Avenue, which I guess they're doing that today. But today, it's there's they're using the whole site.
What's also nice about this application coming.
I guess I'm asking about the compatibility of.
Yeah, this application coming first makes the next application coming in um really have to uh. Kind of pay close attention to this proposed circulation plan, um so that. Next application for seventy-six doesn't work by way of site plan approval. You know, then that's not the type, you know, if we if we have heavy machinery and and, you know, wide-term vehicles coming through, it may not work for them. And and this application was here first.
All right, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Um I do, um i- and this might be more for Ms. McGovern, and I should actually know this, I think, um. If the if the planning board issues a waiver on parking and says, you know, for the thirty-seven hundred feet of office space, that we we would grant that waiver. And not require any parking spots, does that, is that use specific to this applicant, or would that carry on to future uses of the land?
Well, if they vacated it and somebody else came in, they'd be coming in with a new site plan, so you'd be starting.
Okay, the variance, variance doesn't stick with the land, okay.
Well, variance does run with the land, but in this case, um it's a good question.
I guess what I'm saying is, you know, if five, ten, whatever years down the road, it it it's no longer a cannabis uh. Facility and it's, you know, and and it becomes office space and is only office space, have we granted a permanent waiver for zero parking spots? When fifteen should be required for office space.
Yeah.
No, I I don't think so, Ms. McGovern, um.
I I I'd agree with Ms. Keller on that one, too.
Yeah, I I don't think that that's gonna, no, it's it, because they have to come back for a whole new application, so it you would be addressing it at that time and as a whole.
Yeah, and and this this is, this is, you know, you're approving this in the context of this conditional use permit for this use. And this is, you know, the office is not, you know, it's it's ancillary, you know, kind of to the use here, so I I don't think so at all. And I think you you could even word it in the resolution that way, if you wanted to be specific, Ms. McGovern.
Yeah, um the the parking variances.
Yeah.
To the conditional use stipulation and the the use as a cultivated cul- cannabis cultivator, I can take care of that. To make sure that it's just limited to this particular entity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Council President Rutherford, do you have any questions, sir? Council President Rutherford? We'll come back to the council president. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Mayor McCartney. Council President Rutherford, do you have any questions, sir? No. Mr. Morgan, did I get you? Did I ask you if you had any questions?
Yes, you did.
Okay, good, just wanted to be sure. Uh okay, we'll pass on council president and. Mr. Hess, do you have any questions?
I have uh one quick question, Mr. Chairman, um. The testimony that was provided related to the um the four. Parking space variances that are requested, where fifty-two are required and forty-eight are proposed. And that's shown on their uh site one drawing as V two. But there was also, or variance too, but there was also a variance one request, and that was a variance. From providing fifteen parking spaces for the um support office space in the building. And and that has not been addressed by Mr. Darty, and I think he needs to uh provide some testimony on that.
I do apologize. Um so the the support, if you will. Again, we're we're really limited to maximum by state law, ten employees. Um you know, the additional support, again, the building, um it's a- as a as a state force, it's an oversized building for the use itself. Um to require additional parking here would be wasteful um uh for this for this particular application. Um again, that that relief would fall under that C two. Um again, by virtue of the max and ten employees that that can be employed by the micro uh facility. You know, these would be done in shift, so if we did have ten employees max. Um you know, it's fair, it's very highly unlikely all in ten employees would need to be on shift at the same time. Uh so by by way of that that fifteen parking deficiency, if you will. Um the again, that really is uh inter- interrelated to the structure itself. Um but not the operation itself, um which is governed by the state. Um so again, that that kind of that that fifteen um discrepancy for for that. Is essentially why we believe we we satisfy the conditions um imposed for, and that this is not a D three, but virtue of C two.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Ms. Keller, do you have any questions?
Um just to clarify that that last point, thank you, Mr. Hess, for bringing that up, because I was gonna make the same point, um. But yeah, I I think, you know, just just Mr. Doggy, like, the the way, would you describe it as, you know, even though the ordinance separates the two uses? Where the um the cannabis requires the light industrial parking, but the office is separate. But in essence, they're really one use, so so yeah. Okay, so so it's not like it's gonna be double counting employees, it's all just one employees of one use, so, okay, thank you, I have nothing further.
Thank you. Any members of the public have any questions?
Dr. Bagoff, I have just one. One thing, um. Can we confirm that you can't sublet that empty space to any other entity?
Yeah, nobody can use it.
Yeah, we 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 can, we can make that right.
I cannot, I cannot sublet that.
Okay, fine, just wanted to make sure, because that would bring up a whole other issue on parking, I'm just gonna add that as a condition.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Who? Hess? Mr. Hess?
No.
Garino. Mr. Garino, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This may not be the type, but during all the site plans and all the blueprints and everything else. And Chief Smorado can stop me if this is not the section. But I don't see any place on the plan where there is any water source for the apparatus, I guess, other than hydrants on the street. Am I wrong, or is this not the type to ask that question?
We we can actually address it really quickly, Mr. Garino, uh if if you want. Uh and and I'm actually just looking back. Uh at the chief's letter here, because I think this was a point that he he addressed rather expressly and directly. Um so I'm hoping my phone will pull it up faster than I do, um. The long and the short of it being that he had suggested that there are not any hydrants that are that are near enough to this site. Uh to provide. Uh, to provide uh water service. And that if we were to extend and and I believe the applicants can is going to be extending water service to the facility. Uh, that that we uh assure that there's an FDC or something equivalent uh on the facility. And I'm just I'm just grabbing his letter on that point.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
Hey, Dr. Bagoff, did you note that um? Council President Rutherford is having technical difficulties. He indicated that he. Could hear everything but could not um unmute, but he had no questions.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, let me any members of the public have any questions from Mr. Doherty? Do any members of the public have any questions from Mr. Doherty? Raise your hand, please be identified.
I'm not seeing any yet.
Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Doherty. Next, Mr. McLeod.
That's what we've got for affirmative testimony, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you know, what what I'll do is just very briefly. Summarize a little bit of this and then I hand it back to you for for comments and comments and questions. Um, I want I want to thank the board for for reconsidering this application. As you've seen, there's been a a pretty substantial uh rework. Of how the site operates, uh, and, you know, additions of additional material to satisfy a lot of the concerns the board had raised. Uh, particularly as it relates to site circulation. And as our professional planner testified. There are really two planning two planning variances here here at play. And I actually want to want to uh thank Ms. Keller for for clarifying really. Uh, the the way that the uh the the additional fifteen spots kind of plays because it does. Uh, the way the code would count would effectively double count those spaces. And uh because of the the state licensure, we're we're limited to only ten employees uh for the facility. And then on an overall basis. You know, really, the there's adequate space and we've maximized the space for for both. Uh, good and appropriate site circulation as evidenced by the approval of both the police chief and the fire chief. Uh, as well as maximizing the parking as best we can. Uh, the the request from the applicant would be approval uh of the conditional uh. Uh, use as it's as it's requested, confirmation that we satisfied all conditions, as well as approval of the minor psych plan. Uh, with the conditions that the chairman will, I'm sure eminently, uh, lay into the record uh. Uh, as we get to that point this evening. So I want to thank you all for the time. I don't want to belabor any points. It's already nine fifty. Um, and I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any comment about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any comment about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have a member of the public, Charles Penn. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, yes, my name is Charles Penn. I live at seven twelve Traveling Road in Union, New Jersey. Um, I'm on here tonight to show support for James Jackson and Yurkana. Um, I know that his work ethic and character is not. Uh, at question tonight, um, but they will bring nothing but value to the town the same way that we are going to and we have. And I just wanted to state that on record. I thank everybody for your time and enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you so much for your comment. Do any members of the public have any uh comment about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Not seeing any.
Seeing none. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. McLeod, let let we're going to sort of clean everything up and put it all together with Ms. McGovern. So we're saying that there are two C two variances, not a C one and C two. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. We can justify it either way, but CT is cleaner. So let's do.
Okay, good. So based on the, and so I'll start and everybody can add in. How's that? So based on the testimony of Mr. Doherty and Mr. Fisher. Um. The and the request by the applicant for a C two variance. For four parking spaces and fifteen parking spaces. We understand that the spaces uh are limited by how many people can be in there. And uh our ordinance requires a certain amount of spaces. And eventually in the future, it may, uh, based on what the council uh so chooses to evaluate, change. But it is our task now to decide, uh, is this a a good thing to have here? So uh, an applicant must show the purposes of the MLUL forty calling fifty-two. D dash two would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance. Required and that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment of the inherent. And purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, which is a negative criteria. I I believe, uh, and I proffer that uh Mr. Doherty and Mr. Fisher have successfully done that, um. To my understanding, and I recommend that we grant the uh two C two variances. Um, Ms. McGovern, you want to go over the remaining um conditions? There's one other thing. Um, I would recommend a condition that the board will have to decide. That prior to the beginning of the operation, there's an air quality test done. This way we will have a baseline. That uh no matter what happens in the future, the applicant will not have to. Clean air if somebody in the neighborhood smells something and we can't quantify it. On the other hand. If there is a problem, it's easily quantified by an air quality test in the air. And I leave this to the professionals. To give advice. Does that make sense? Can we use as a baseline uh to help our applicants and the members of the community?
Making a condition.
Well, I'm I'm asking Ms. Hess or Mr. Hess or Ms. Keller, do they have any uh input on that?
I I don't think a uh baseline testing hurts, but I do believe that cannabis is a very distinct odor. And you're not going to mistake it for um anything else.
Okay.
Yeah, I I think I don't know enough about the science behind that type of testing. I think, you know, what you're describing logically makes sense. Um, I'm not sure specifically how it's measured or how it works with cannabis, but um. Yeah, I I I I would defer to Mr. Hess.
Then what I'm going to do is I'm going to leave it open ended to the applicant. I I wouldn't put as a condition, I recommend uh that you do it based on what we've heard. And that if if neighbors come and say they smell cannabis and you have to invest in more um scrubbers. Uh, as opposed to you have a you have a baseline test that somebody can quantify. This is this is a brave new world. And we're trying to move together. Um, so that that's just a recommendation, not a uh condition. Uh, Ms. McGovern, do you have additional conditions?
Uh, yeah, we have a few, um. If uh the applicant uh. Is going to use the empty second floor space, they will have to return to the board for amended site plan and. Perhaps other parking requirements. The EV space will be operational, um. From the beginning. Lighting, they will submit a plan to be approved by the township engineer. They will clean up the parking lot, which uh will be determined by the. Zoning Officer Director of Planning, uh, which may include completely repaving or resurfacing the parking lot. Striping, installing the EV parking spaces, marking the ADA compliance spot. Labeling compact car spots, uh, emergency vehicle. Striping and numbering the parking spaces. Uh. The seven parking spaces for the grow center. In the northeast corner will be reserved for employee parking. The traffic path, um, if two-way traffic. Well, the traffic path will be determined by the township engineer as to aisle width. And whether a do not enter sign will be added. For traffic attempting to go back toward Ashland. Enter only from Ashland and exit and enter off of Park Avenue, Park Avenue or Park Street. I don't know what that is. Um, deliveries and product movement may only. Avenue, thank you. Um, delivered deliveries and product movement. Uh, out of the facility must uh be utilized through Park, the Park Avenue exit only. And the applicant is prohibited from subletting the empty space to another entity.
And there's going to be pressure, uh, I want to get the right wording, pressure control doors between the sites?
Pressure controlled.
As as to decrease any uh aroma leaving the site. Is that correct?
Yes, I was testified to.
Just to be clear, pressure control doors to the entrance and exit of the main site.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
There will also be no signage on the outside of the building identifying what this uh business is, except for the address.
Yes, sir.
And that we there will be a uh and and the 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 chief's letter. The fire subcode officials letter will be all all included in the documentation. And. Okay. Does any other member of the board have any conditions or questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Meraldo, go right ahead, sir.
Go back to uh what we talked about before is the sprinklers and and the window. Structure. I want to get that on the record. I want to talk about, you know, the fire alarm system, everything else because it is a windowless. Uh, because we just uh heard testimony about that the. The uh. Hydrants aren't close by or near enough. Um, I just want to make sure that. Um. Because this is a windowless type of structure, which is required by the state. Um, and that we have to worry about firefighter safety and everything else. Does this uh in the opinion of of the architect or whoever designing? Um, does this building require? Sprinklers because it is a two-story. And I understand he's occupying only twenty-five hundred feet for operation, but it's both the building itself, I believe, is always what eight? Seventy-five, eight thousand square feet. I forget what the exact amount is, but. I just want to make sure that that this particular uh occupancy is covered for that, um. You know, for that type of uh uh fire spread and everything else because, one, we do have, we have building that's next, the the exposure building. On on the one side of the property is is matter of a couple of feet. We want to make sure that we keep things checked. It's it also is a benefit to the uh. To the owner and, you know, if. From an insurance perspective, but I want to make sure it's within the code first and first and foremost, um. And um, I I I need an explanation on that and the and the um alarm system that's going to be accompanying it because I think that is required by the code.
Yeah, so so Mr. Fisher, if you can talk about the the sprinklering on the on the facility, then James, maybe you can touch briefly on the uh on the. The alarm system. Or Sean, if you know about it.
But yes, the the sprinkler system is going to be required for this building. It's a um factory occupancy based on the cultivation. Use of the building. So um a sprinkler system will be installed in the building and in a subsequent uh fire alarm system. Um, needed to monitor the sprinkler system to notify the fire department of an event uh would be required as well.
And then and I'm I'm glad to hear that and I I and I appreciate that, um. Uh, but my other question then too would be then, um, for this for the the safety of of the product that that's being um. Uh, uh, grown and everything else. Is this could be a wet system? Is this could be a dry system or pre-action system? I mean, what would be the best, you know, I I I'm and in that sense, I'm actually looking out for the owner because, you know, we don't want to have an accidental discharge. And, you know, you know, we have a additional watering that's not required of so.
Sure, no, it'll be a wet pipe sprinkler system.
Okay, all right. And then uh and that goes back to my earlier comment before we were talking about parking, then. We need to make sure that we um somehow have the access of to where it's installed for the 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 the. The Y system, the the OS and Y system into the building so that when we hook into the, when the fire department does hook into it, that. There's clear access that's clearly indicated that the that's where the the uh sprinkler connection is.
Correct, yep, that will be required by code. So the fire department connection will be right outside the building, right adjacent to the. Strike fire lane uh or the fire truck access.
I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smaraldo. Do any other members of the board have any additions or questions?
Chairman, I have one.
Mayor McCartney.
So we talked about there was testimony to a carbon filtration sent a system and you just spoke about. Um. All the air quality testing, right? So. For whatever reason, if that doesn't work, what happens?
The uh zoning official will have to speak with the uh engineer. And come up with a recommendation to the uh applicant. To mitigate it. That's why I think uh an air quality test, if there is such a thing for cannabis, may help them.
Uh, that was a good idea.
I just, if I could just hop in really quickly, just to just to just to um address. I am a I I'm a member of the West Orange community. I have three kids that are in the school district in West Orange. In no way, shape or form do I want to have odor emanating from my building to make anyone uncomfortable. Um, or just unwanted odor in general, right? Um, this is not my my first cultivation facility. I've been in the cannabis industry for ten plus years. Uh, my level of confidence in bringing this to the community and and bringing tax dollars to this community is the same level of confidence that I have that I won't be. Polluting the community with any type of odor um that may me make anybody uncomfortable. Um. Now, I I know it goes a lot. I know it it only goes as far as who I am to say, hey, I give you my word, but. Um, my point of 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 addressing the planning board in this manner is to say. I am of the community and will work with the community. If there are complaints from the community that there is odor, a a hundred and ten percent. It's my duty and responsibility to 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 remediate that. Um, I would like to give you my assurance, though. Um, that you will not receive those complaints. Um, I run a super tight ship. Um, there will no never be an instance where a door is left open or there's a reason for order to get out. Um, and and I look forward to proving that to the community.
And Mr. Jackson.
James, I appreciate that, but I I just do have a question. Should it happen? Um. You know, and again, this is all new to us. Are. Is there some type of regulation that says it has to be corrected in certain number of hours or days or? What's what's the next step?
Yeah, I can't, I I I mean, what what I'm not going to do is 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 offer a uh like a specific remediation. What I will say is. This is uh cannabis is new, right? Um, it's 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 new to everybody. We're figuring this this out as we go along. Um, as 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 I have been an example of throughout this full regulatory process, not just with the planning board, but with every step of this process, right? Um, uh. I don't know that there's enough research or understanding to even say, hey, this is the the example of what the remediation needs to be or what the steps are that need to be taken. Um, what I can say is, along with, you know, other recommendations that have been made tonight is. Um, that I will work with this board. I will work with um uh Ms. Gary Adams. I will work with the engineer to ensure that if there is a complaint. That it is dealt with immediately, um, meaning that day, that week, right? Um, not something that that lingers and is and is uh and and is left to uh to to happen since.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. McGovern, is that something we can put in as a condition?
A condition that he's uh, well.
Immediately address if there's ever a complaint.
See. I don't know that you can do that with anything. For example, if somebody's garbage is all over their lawn, there's a period of time that somebody has to reasonably address something. So it would be like any other. In my mind, it would be like any other type of maintenance issue where it is directly affecting. People in the neighborhood. I guess if the town gets enough complaint, if you get a complaint and you check it out and it's verified. Then it would be up to whoever your enforcement agency would be for something like this. I don't know that your ordinance speaks to this problem. Specifically.
That's why I'm questioning it to see.
Well, um, if you want to indicate that uh reasonable measures must be ta- taken, um. And within a reasonable time to be deter- I mean, it's like any other applicant, any other property maintenance comp. Kind of problem, um. Uh, I'm I'm sure there's been other situations in town where somebody has garbage that's really smelly. That that has to be addressed. If it's a health issue, uh, depending upon the level of health issue, that that's going to ratchet up. How much time it should or should not uh it should be enforced in terms of taking actual action. I don't know. That you can make any specific condition on it.
Perhaps the uh applicant could provide the township with an emergency contact list. With names and phone numbers. So in case there is a problem. That we have a resource to know who to contact and that, you know, they're available uh. Twenty-four, seven, in case there is an issue.
That's a great idea.
I I think we should call it an emergency action plan. If there is an emergency, the applicant will tell us exactly how it's going to be mediated. Or remediated within with a certain timeframe and they'll deliver that to you. And you'll decide, does that make sense? How's that? Be fair to everybody.
Yep. Thank you, Chairman. Mm-hmm. Thank you, Mr. Hess.
Comment to make on that is. Mr. Jackson, is there somebody at the state that's going to come watch over you? And if they see a violation. You'll be reprimanded. And if we say something to that agency, they'll come and ask you, hey, clean this up. Are there other people here that'll?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So from that perspective, um, the CRC govern- the New Jersey CRC governs uh cannabis and all cannabis regulations. All violations, all things of that nature, right? So me as an applicant, I. So me as an applicant, I have a specific, I have a specific field investigator, right? So that person is the person that's going to come out and once we're done building out is going to do all of the all of the checks, all the compliance checks to make sure everything is order in order prior to me opening. From that point, when I actually open, I get assigned somebody that I have to deal with on a regular basis. That comes and does spot checks and also can pop up at any time without warning and do a spot check on my my facility. So. The way that you think about the NJ CRC is very similar to to how pharma is governed, right? But even closer. We cannot miss a step. I cannot untag a plant. If I get a violation, that could cause me to lose my license at the state level.
All right. Or like or like a daycare center or something where, you know, children have to be watched over and there's agencies that look at that.
Exactly. The NJ CRC is.
There's there's love above.
Yes, NJ CRC is the governing is the governing agency that that governs us from a standpoint of complaints, from a standpoint of compliance, all of those things related.
So so we would also in the act emergency action plan, get the contact information for the CRC rep.
So. I am not allowed to legally give you my field investigators' information. So that would be something.
Call the CRC. We'll just call.
That would be something that you communicate directly with the CRC, yeah.
Okay, do any of the members of the board have any questions or additions? Seeing none. Okay, I make a motion. That based on the testimony aforementioned, we grant the two C two variances for parking. Deficiencies. As discussed. This evening by Mr. Fisher and Mr. Doherty and Mr. McLeod. And all conditions that Ms. McGovern has delineated. I need a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And this, I I should really make this, sorry, hang on a minute. PB twenty-four dash show seven Essex County Country Club Block one thirty-six Lot one, zone, I'm sorry.
We're not the country club, we're on the year can.
PB twenty-four oh five year can. LLC Block sixty-two lots twenty-two dot oh one thirty-two and thirty-four Zone one seventy-six eighty-two Ashland Avenue. Who seconded?
Second, Mr. Chairman, I did.
Mr. Vice Chairman second, Corino seconds. On the motion, Gamalat.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan? Mr. Morgan?
I suddenly don't see him. Oh, there he is.
Mrs. Smeraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Cardozo?
Yes.
Council President Rutherford?
Yes.
Ma'am McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Yes, Mr. Jackson, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Mr. McLeod, Mr. McPherson, thank you very much for the presentation, Mr. Doherty, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you as well.
Night out. Best wishes.
Thank you, Mary.
Hey, we got this. We got this.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a break?
Yes, yes, five minutes. On mute. Okay, we should be back on the record momentarily. It's five minutes. Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Hello, howdy. Hi. Welcome back. Everybody here? Give them thirty seconds.
Yep.
Nick, Will here?
They're here.
Here, 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 there, there. Have to wait for a moderator.
I'm sorry, I'm back.
Okay, back on the record. PB twenty-four dash oh seven Essex County Country Club Block one fifty-six Lot one Zone R two three fifty Mount Pleasant Avenue. For the applicant, Ms. John Basta.
Present Chair. Um, if you'd like me to start, as the board's aware, the applicant appeared before it in February, presented its affirmative application. All its witness, all of applicants witnesses were extensively asked questions by the board and the public. We concluded our affirmative case. Ms. Bennett began an objection case whereby she presented Mr. Steck. And I believe she has requested that Mr. Steck continue the affirmative testimony this evening. So that's where we are.
Ms. Bennett.
Hang on one second.
Sure.
Do you want me to promote her to panelist?
Yes, and Mr. Stick as well because he's going to be testifying.
Okay, doing that now.
Thank you.
Okay, they're both in.
Ms. Bennett.
Good evening, Chair.
Good evening.
So thank you for promoting me to panelist and thank you for rearranging this evening's. Matters so that Mr. Steck could join us tonight after his. In-person hearing of Perth Amboy. I appreciate that very much. Just preliminarily before. Continuing his testimony, I did want to ask on the record. I had provided two submissions. To the planning board and I know Ms. McGovern, you made sure that the submission that I provided. Before the March hearing and in response to Ms. John Basta's letter brief. I think you said on Monday that it had been added to the record. But there is a secondary. Submission. That I forwarded to you at seven o'clock this evening, that as of seven o'clock this evening, it still had not been added to the record. Both had substantive arguments. That this board should have been able to consider. So that's one issue. I don't know if that can be corrected. It wasn't a very long. Wasn't a very long submission, but it should be considered.
The difference between your letter. That was put on the on the. Link. And your email. Was your letter included some cases and. Argument with respect to statutes. And so in order for the board to. Review those matters and if they wanted to look up the case or request information about a case, those sources. That's why they were put there in response. I know it was a direct response to Ms. John Bass's letter. Your email. Sites no case law. It's just argument. You could read it to the board right now. You can make those very arguments now because you're in person. That you're not fore, you're not foreclosed from from presenting that as testimony right now.
So Ms. McGovern. In response to that, the body of the email explained that I was traveling. Was without a laptop. I was writing from a phone in a rest area, but I did cite to case law. And in the very first line, it asked for this to be included in the record. It also asked if that was not acceptable for a response from you. But, you know, that's fine. That's that's fine and.
You're here and you can do it now. This is your part of the case. So so feel free.
I I understand that. I think what I'd like to do, though, is make sure that Mr. Steck has the opportunity to be heard because of the late hour. And I think it would be important to share that email with the board. The other issue just preliminarily that I wanted to raise was that on the record, there has been included. A notice of wetlands letter of interpretation. There's been no application for wetland. Letter of interpretation. This is a notice that was provided to the township. It does not have attachments that it cites to in the letter. It was also provided to a couple of neighbors, but not all neighbors as required. And it in the notice, it claims that there are enclosures. I don't know if. This notice was premature, but I can tell you that checking with the DEP. There's no application for a letter of interpretation. So I'm not sure if that should be included in the record.
Mr. Chair, can I, I don't mean to cut Ms. Bennett off, but this 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 letter that Ms. Bennett is addressing, I was unaware that this was even on the agenda until you pointed it out. This is a letter, there was a. LOI that was submitted. I guess notice was provided to the township and the township uploaded this to our agenda. The applicant does not believe that this is part of our affirmative case at all. We did not submit it for filing with the board or for the board's consideration. So to the extent that it's part of the record, I ask that it be withdrawn.
Yeah, and I would just ask that it be withdrawn because it's it's not factually accurate and I think it would mislead. I mean, it is one of your experts who is providing notice that. There is an intention to file for a letter of interpretation, but I wouldn't.
Bennett noticed it's withdrawn.
Withdrawn, withdrawn, done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think it's I I, as I, as I stated, while there is an email that does. Make reference, I I really would like to just shift so that the board can hear from Mr. Steck. I know that Ms. John Basta had filed a letter and that letter brief. Made conclusions, I think either she was under.
You want to present Mr. Stack or do you want to keep going? It's your your time. Just let us know what you want to do.
I'm I am letting you know what I'd like to do. I ju, I'm I'm introducing Mr. Steck, but I'm introducing him. Specifically because Ms. John Vasta filed a letter brief. Citing conclusions and Mr. Sex's testimony had not concluded. So I think that. There was some misunderstanding and if he can, if he can begin his testimony there. And just clarify, summarize, clarify, and then move forward with his exhibit. And the additional information. I would appreciate that.
Are you going to ask questions of the witness? Is that what you're going to do that? Okay, Mr. Stack, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Ms. Bennett.
Thank you. All right. So Mr. Sec, have you had the opportunity to read the February twenty-third? Letter brief from Ms. John Basta?
I have.
Okay, and so since it makes conclusions that may or may not be accurate to your opinion, I wonder if you could start there.
Yes, I just briefly, the letter. Attempts to summarize at least what Ms. John Basta thought I testified to. First of all, my testimony isn't complete, wasn't complete. So it was premature, I think, in summarizing my testimony, and I think it was inaccurate. In that. She. Emphasized that generically I said. That a halfway house. Could be considered and accessory use. However, I said the investigation wasn't through yet. Because of the provisions in the so-called Tanis case, which says there's a two-part investigation. You know, the first part has to do with. How it, how frequent it is associated with similar principal use, but the second part has to do. With the impact on the community, which is a factor that must be considered in order to classify it. As a bona fide accessory use. So with that. Preliminary, I I want to make certain supplements to my testimony and make certain comments. First of all, as the board knows. Near the proposed location of the so-called halfway house. There are wetlands. The applicant's site plan ignored that in the beginning. There has been an effort to delineate them on the plans. And there is no witness that has been offered by the applicant to indicate that the technique. Of surveying the extent of the wetlands. If there have been any changes in the past. And it it appears that there has been regrading vegetation removal in the wetlands. So. The point I'm emphasizing. the point I'm emphasizing is that, uh, the record is really not complete as to the wetlands. Because the, uh, alleged authority, uh, is not present, uh, to be questioned. It's an unresolved issue. Um, I have an exhibit that I would like to show because following that last meeting, I, I went out and took some photographs of the wetlands. And if I could share my screen, uh, I'll try and put it up. I'm assuming that's visible to the board.
Yes, yes, sir. Very small, but yes.
Okay, let's make it a little larger. This, uh, exhibit, and I'll just flip through it, consists of a total of six pages. It was prepared by me and it's dated, um, March 6th of 2024. These pictures were taken by me on March 6th and I believe they accurately, uh, depict the existing conditions. One of the issues I raised was that not only are trees going to be removed from the proposed halfway house, uh, but I testified last time that if you'd simply look at the location of the trees and the extent of disturbance that is on the plans, there are more trees going to be removed necessarily than shown on the plan. So it's an inaccurate rendition. Not addressed by the applicant is the fact that the utility lines uh, are going to, uh, go down adjacent to the fairway and then angle, uh, to Old Indian Road and cut through a wooded area. And that area is shown in the upper left-hand corner and it's simply a, a per portion of the plans, the, the waterman plans, the grading and utility plan. And, uh, this is, the photo on the right is where it is going to come out. There is a, an, an electrical termination of, of power adjacent to the road. And coming down this hill is where that utility line is going to go. And, uh, certainly within the first 75 feet, the applicant is required to get permits for tree removal, uh, has to show which trees are removed. Uh, this is going to revolve, involve trenching of a line, which means cutting off the roots of the trees. There's no indication of what tree damage, uh, is going to, uh, occur, but surely it is going to occur. Not only in the first 75 feet, but for an extensive area. And there's no indication on the plans of where that, that line is to go. The second photograph is simply a, uh, uh, has a map on the left-hand side where I've highlighted the disturbed area in, in a yellow rectangle and then in darker yellow, uh, where the halfway house is proposed. I've highlighted, um, the extent of the wetlands that are alleged, uh, by the applicant. And in a lighter blue color, uh, the 50-foot limit, assuming that these wetlands were correctly, um, classified as intermediate. Uh, the applicant, uh, again, without a foundation is claiming they're intermediate. If they are extraordinary, that wetland buffer would extend 150 feet and include the area that is going to be disturbed. You can already see in this, uh, uh, 2002 aerial photograph that there's an area without vegetation, which is part of an area which appears to have been disturbed by the golf course in the past, even though it is adjacent to the wetlands. The red markings are simply photographs that I've taken and I'll, they're, they're enlarged, but this is kind of a simply a, a key map of where they are. So my first photograph is looking from the rear yard of a property, uh, toward the area where the facility is going to be located. Uh, the second one is taken in the reverse direction showing, uh, the wetlands that exists. Uh, the third one is in a northerly direction toward the wetlands. And the fourth one, um, is, uh, looking in a northwesterly direction and small versions are on the right. So I'm going to run through those four photographs now in more detail. This is a photograph looking through the woods. In, in the rear center is approximately where, uh, the halfway house is going to go. As you see, these are, uh, tall deciduous trees, uh, that don't constitute any kind of buffering. There is little or no, uh, low vegetation, uh, and these are all, uh, deciduous trees. The second photograph is kind of talking and looking in the reverse direction. And you can see water visibly ponding, uh, where the, the, the wetlands are. And then to the rear of that, you see some of the homes that front on Old Indian Road. The next one is a view. Um, in the lower left-hand corner, there's a, a, a concrete head wall. Uh, there's a pipe and this, uh, water flows into the wetlands from the area, uh, by the homes that front on Old Indian Road. The sixth one is another view of, again, the obvious wet area that's in that area. Just to show that indeed, um, these are wetlands. And that they offer, at least in the wintertime, no significant buffering, um, from what is being proposed.
Mr. Stack, before you take that down, would you mind going back to your, um, the, the page that depicts the wetlands?
Uh, sure. Uh, let me. Okay.
Just that
That was P2 of my exhibit. And by the way, I, I do believe that the photographs accurately depict, uh, what I was looking at on, uh, March 6th.
Thank you. So I, I just, um, drawing your attention. There is a, I, I understood the dark blue line is, um, what's depicted on the site plans. Beneath the dark blue line is a shaded area. And if I'm remembering correctly, but I want to confirm with you, that is your, that is what you identified from a map as the wetland area. Is that correct?
The light blue solid area is an area identified on the NJDEP Geo website. So that is, I, a suspected wetlands area, not subject yet to a letter of interpretation. It obviously extends onto the private properties, uh, but that is the area that at least, uh, NJDEP suspects that there are wetlands. The dark blue line is where the applicant alleges are the limits of the wetlands, again, without authent- authentication. And the light blue line is the 50-foot buffer, which may or may not be applicable depending upon the value of the wetlands.
And so just staying there, just one other question. In the event, you said that in the event that these wetlands would be determined to not be intermediate, but be extraordinary, there would be a 150-foot buffer. Could you, with your arrow? I don't know if you can estimate where that would?
Well, I'll, again, it would be three times this, the width is 50 feet. So it would clearly include additional area. If you add this 50 feet two more times, now some of this area has clearly already been disturbed. But, uh, while, and while the applicant might be able, under normal circumstances, to talk about buffer averaging, meaning reducing from 150 to 75 feet, even with buffer averaging, um, if this is extraordinary value, uh, they would be disturbed by this building. So this is a crucial part of the application. It's kind of a make or break. That if it turns out that the, uh, buff, if buffer, it, first of all, if it turns out that the limits of the wetlands are greater than is shown on the site plan, that means that the buffer, even though it's 50 feet, might be greater. And it certainly means that if they're extraordinary value, um, the building cannot be located in that location by state law. So it is a fundamental issue in this application. It's a make or break to know the limit of the wetlands and the categorization of the wetlands.
Okay, thank you.
Springing from that, um, I know that in many instances, the board is familiar with conditioning approval of a site plan application upon other agencies, such as, uh, the county, if you're on a county road, the county planning board, uh, the, um, Department of, uh, Transportation, if it's on a state highway. But the, uh, municipal land use law in section 4055D dash 22 says that it's, uh, a municipality can condition approvals, uh, by other, its local approval, uh, upon approval by other government agencies. And it says in appropriate instances. So as a cautionary note, it's not required that you simply pass this off to other agencies. There are instances where the issue is so fundamental that in my opinion, the issue of the wetlands extent and type need to be resolved because it's, it's a make or break for the, this part of the application. If the wetlands are turn out to be larger in their extent than the applicant suggests in the site plan, this application, uh, cannot go ahead. If it's a different type of wetlands, it cannot go ahead. So the second point I raise is that this is a fundamental aspect of this application, which the applicant avoided initially by not even putting them on the plans, hoping, uh, we wouldn't catch this. I'll call it a mistake for the moment. But the answer is it, it, there are wetlands there and we don't have any testimony that's reliable about the nature and extent of those wetlands.
The Mr. Stack, just, um, on the issue of the wetlands and, um, you're not an expert in wetlands. Is that?
I am not. I just use secondary data that's published.
Okay. And are you able to share with the board? What distinguishes wetlands from intermediate to extraordinary? Or do you think that's outside your purview?
The, the law talks about, uh, for example, if there's a threatened or endangered species in the area that relies on the resource, that can trigger an extraordinary value. So it's not physically necessarily what's there. It's, it's how it relates to supporting nature.
And wildlife.
And wildlife.
Okay. And in addition, do you, if you know, in addition to endangered species, any species that's on the protected list is also
That may also trigger a higher classification of wetlands.
Okay. Ms. Bennett, Ms. Bennett, as Mr. Stack identified, he is not an expert in wetlands. Let's move on to planning. He's here as a planner. Let's talk about planning, please.
Okay, uh, uh, absent a wetlands expert, I would really like to inquire, just so you know, I would really like to inquire of the applicant's wetlands expert. So because as you recollect, the individual who drew the site plans identified Mr. Fee, uh, Fiorelli. I know he said he was from Matrix New World, but, um, I know that he is the person who's provided the notice about the letter of interpretation. And he identifies himself as Waterman, which is also on
The letter of interpretation is withdrawn.
Right.
And do you remember, we talked about Ms. Bennett, do you remember we talked about that? And you agreed to that?
Of course.
And I, that's on the record, right?
Of course I do.
Let's move on.
Of course I do. But I'm making a different point, Chairman. The point that I'm making is that the person who wrote, who drew the site plans. And after we pointed out that the wetlands were missing, he couldn't answer questions. I inquired of him. He told me he couldn't answer questions because he had relied upon a wetlands expert and he named him and said he was from Matrix New World. To be able to adequately address this with a wetlands expert, I would like to inquire of the wetlands expert who designated this as intermediate. I ju, I'm, I'm just asking if the applicant intends to
I, I can, I can respond to this. Yes. So Mr. Chair, as I pointed out in my February 23rd, 2024, letter brief to the board, I addressed the specific section on wetlands considerations and, and deferrals of outside agencies. I stated case law was in that letter, which states that if, uh, number one, wetlands are within the sole discretion of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. I stated, stated case law where the court has ruled that an applicant was not required to produce an environmental expert during the local board proceedings to answer questions on the impacts of development might have on his existing ponds and dismiss an objector's argument to that end. In this instance, the applicant has agreed that as a condition of approval, if the board were to approve this application, it would submit a letter of interpretation to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. That letter would verify whether the proposed structure is being placed within wetlands or not. If it's being placed in wetlands or not, we would have to come back to this board and modify the approval. If it is not, then we can go forward with our proceeding. So at this point in time, we've addressed this, this, this issue multiple times and Ms. Bennett doesn't like the response and she keeps bringing it up over and over again to delay this application in my opinion. So if we can just have a ruling as to whether this is appropriate for the board to even have jurisdiction over, like, that would, I feel would be appropriate at this juncture.
Chairman, just in response, I will say Ms. John Basta is correct. She cited to case law. But the case law is not controlling. And as I cited in my response, she cited to case law that is not controlling. And the case law that is controlling and on point, she doesn't want to, she doesn't want to rely upon because it's contrary to her
Have you cited case law, Ms. Bennett? Have you cited case law for your opinion?
Yes, I have responded to all of the citations of your case law. And I know that it's upsetting that I know that it's upsetting that you've edited the book on this.
Move on. Ms. Bennett, we're done with the wetlands.
You've made a mistake.
Ms. Bennett.
Okay.
I just want to find out if we're able to inquire with her expert who delineated wetlands. That's all. I just want to find out if we're able to inquire or not.
Mr. Chair, I am not producing an expert on wetlands. It is outside the sport jurisdiction.
Okay, we can move, then we can move on. Okay.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Um, Mr. Stack, so if you wouldn't mind, um, sharing with the board this idea that the halfway house that we've been given notice will be serving alcohol through the notice and through the witnesses produced by the applicant. Whether alcohol is a permitted accessory use, if, if you wouldn't mind, um, pivoting to that point.
So, um,
Well, well, one sec, one second. Ms. John Basta, is your application before the planning board to serve alcohol at this site now?
My application is for a halfway house that will have two restroom facilities and 100 square foot walk-up snack bar that will sell prepackaged goods that might include alcohol. We do not have approval from the ABC Commission to serve alcohol of this structure, since we don't have approval from the board to actually construct it. In the event that we were granted the approval, again, we will apply to the appropriate regulatory authorities that have jurisdiction over the sale of alcohol from the structure.
Ms. John Basta's first witness stated they will be selling alcohol from this building.
At that time, Ms. Bennett, they can't sell, they're precluded at this moment from selling alcohol at that site by condition, if, if it is approved by condition of this application. Because it is not an application, there is no license to sell alcohol there.
I understand. I understand, Chair.
Then
I understand, Chair. But I'm entitled to inquire of my expert about whether or not he believes this board should He believes this board should consider that use.
Mr. Chair, I do want to clarify that.
That's for the zoning, that's for the zoning, but we don't do that. That's the zoning board. It's an interpretation. We can't interpret and they don't have they don't have a a permit. We don't have and we're not interpreting it. Ms. McGovern, can you weigh in on this?
We're mixing a lot of subjects here right now. As I understand it, the applicant understands that they will not have a right to sell alcohol merely from this board should they grant the application to build the halfway house. That a subsequent application has to be made to the town council ABC board. And at that point in time, if they gain that approval um. Then then that would become a relevant thing. I don't know. The board can put a condition on that if approval is granted for alcohol sale that uh maybe you want to do something else in terms of a site plan review for.
Ms. McGovern, I'm just.
Hours, but it's really not.
Ms. Bennett, I would, I mean, Ms. McGovern, I would.
All I'm seeking to do.
Okay, Ms. Bennett, I wasn't done speaking.
I'm sorry?
I wasn't done speaking.
I apologize.
So there's other things that perhaps the board can do, but at this point, the application in front of this board is just to build the structure in the location. And the proffered use is to is to provide. Two restrooms, one which is ADA compliant and also would be utilized. Um I guess it's unisex. And then the other op- aspect of it is for this walk-up snack bar. The whole concept of alcohol isn't before this board only in the sense that. They're being very a- above board and advising that this is what they would like to do. They're not trying to s- they're not they're not saying they're they're getting this approval here. They're they're seeking that approval later on.
Um in response, it no, I'm sorry. In response, the applicant has put forth with their first witness, the president of the board. That it is their intention to take the sale of alcohol off of the tee box at the fifteenth or fourteenth hole.
Yes.
Into this building.
Yes, that's what they want to do, but they're not getting that permission from this.
And they and this is absolutely required in notice to the public if they intend to do it. And it is directly. Municipal land use law says we have the right to inquire about this. We also have the right. To put before you evidence that the board needs to consider this use. When it makes its tennis analysis. And so I am asking you for permission to ask my expert to explain that to the board. Whether you you and you can give it whatever weight you decide to, but I want to create my record for the tennis analysis.
Ms. Ms. McGovern, I I don't object to Ms. Bennett putting on whatever testimony she wants to, but she's she's really mistating the law on multiple points here. Number one, if there's hours that are being placed on and I'm sorry, this goes this goes to something that you stated, if hours are being placed on the sale of alcohol, that will come from the ABC board. Were before this board because this is a permitted use, so the board can't put conditions on the use, right? Um additionally, the notice, the notice. Notice, because Ms. Bennett raised it, we included that this potentially could sell alcohol this structure. However, this golf course has been in existence since the eighteen hundreds. It has always sold alcohol. This structure is not changing the nature or character of this site that the that the public would have to be aware of. The case law that is cited by Ms. Bennett is apples to oranges to what is occurring here. So I mean, she can go on and place whatever she wants to on the record. No objection, Ms. John Basta wants to address it. However, there's mis- misstatements of law all over the place.
But there I agreed in both in both directions, I'm sure, right? You would concede that you've made.
You can have your opinion. No, I I do not concede that at all on my end, but.
You told you told this planning board that they could sell alcohol anywhere they wanted to on the on. On the country club. So I mean, that was a misstatement of law. Whether you want to admit it or not, I understand.
Okay, I just I think the one thing you have to understand, hold on. The one thing that we have to understand is this is a separate new application that was refiled.
I understand.
Started off with a with a a lot of things going on and they really they they cut this off. And they refiled in January, they re-noticed.
I understand.
Included the potential of alcohol sales. They are looking for just this structure. And I think you have to continue with Mr. Stack because it's getting very late and you want to get your testimony in.
Thank you. And and if they hadn't introduced the sale of alcohol with their first witness. Uh maybe I would understand their argument, but they did. They said they intend to sell alcohol from this building. So Mr. Stack. Would you please um provide your opinion to this board? In relation to the tennis two-prong analysis as it pertains to the notice of the sale of alcohol at this building.
Its location, et cetera.
It is fundamental to this application and to the board in considering the site plan that alcohol may be served. The applicant is suggesting, uh don't worry about it, uh it's a separate agency. Well, there are many times there are separate agencies such as DEP, but that is still relevant at this stage. The notice was changed to say that alcohol may be sold. That's essentially an admission by the applicant that it is a needed component of the notice. Because a facility that serves alcohol, in my opinion. From a land use point of view, has different characteristics than one that doesn't so- serve alcohol. There's a whole body of law, as you know, about the retail or consumption of alcohol. Uh that underscores the fact that has different land use considerations. So in my opinion, the board can only consider this. Tan- in tandem with the sale of alcohol. Uh the applicant is trying to suggest that I'll go later and someone else will approve it, but that that unless the applicant says. There will be no alcohol. My my application is not to sell alcohol here, then that eliminates the issue. But if with the word may means the board, in my opinion, has to consider it. It is also relevant, the sale of alcohol with a halfway house. I- in the board's consideration of whether this is a permitted accessory use. As uh indicated before, there's a two-step process uh that came out of the Tanis v Hampton decision. And it said that the impact uh of the land use is relevant rather than just the categorization of a halfway house. The applicant uh presented a planning witness that looked at seven other golf courses. Um that happened to serve alcohol. Um when I testified and presented and exhibit. The distances from those halfway houses to the nearest residential property line. Ranged from a minimum of two hundred and forty feet uh to a maximum of about a thousand feet. We are proposing uh a halfway house. Um that is, I believe, about sixty-five feet from the residential property line. Clearly a a major difference. Although the applicant is, the applicant's planner said that. Number one, he didn't measure the distances and number two, he didn't think it was relevant. I happen to think it's very relevant as to whether this is a permissible uh accessory uh use. The applicant pointed out seven instances. Um there are in uh approximately thirty-nine golf courses within a twenty-mile radius. In the state of New Jersey, according to a publication by the New Jersey Department of uh State Division of Travel and Tourism. There are a hundred and twenty-two golf courses in New Jersey that have at least eighteen holes. So you would think that they would be inclined to have a halfway station. There's no evidence, except for the seven brought up by the applicant. Seven out of a hundred and twenty-two at the moment are said to serve alcohol. And again, we don't know if that is covered by their liquor licenses. Or they're in areas that are not covered by liquor licenses um in those that might be present. We simply don't know. But the ratio here is seven out of a hundred and twenty-two golf courses uh of eighteen uh. Or more holes. The issue uh arises here because number one, it's not that frequent. At least from the evidence on the record that alcohol is served from halfway houses. And number two, in my opinion, the proximity to a residential property line is a significant feature. And in my opinion. A halfway house or initially called a comfort station. That is less than seventy feet from a residential property line. Is not a bona fide accessory use. It is not permitted, in my opinion, by right. And it requires uh an application to the the Board of Adjustment.
Just one one question for clarification. You've said bona fide um accessory use. I believe in West Orange customary is inserted. A customary.
So here here's the wording. So what what does West Orange say? Uh in the schedule of permitted accessory uses. Golf courses and golf clubhouse is the wording for the permitted principal use. Among the list of accessory uses are customary accessory building or structure. Now. Uh that doesn't name a use, but that's the phrasing in the ordinance. So it's kind of an open-ended phrasing. Uh the ordinance, all your ordinance also says that any use not specifically permitted in a zoning district. Is hereby expressly prohibited from that district. I'll also also read you read you the definition of accessory use in your ordinance. Shall mean use naturally and normally incident and subordinate to the principal use of the premises or lot. And then it lists the following uses are not accessory uses and are prohibited. Uh and it numbers, it lists a number of things. My point uh is that the applicant has not explored in a credible fashion by witnesses. Indicating that this is uh a bona fide, a customary and incident accessory use to a golf course. The use being a small building with restrooms, stacks, and most importantly, serving alcoholic beverages.
So Mr. Stack, just one point. All seven of the examples that the applicant provided are examples of halfway houses that are selling alcohol. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and we we know that because they provided um documents that were oprahed from um.
The ABC board, I believe.
Thank you. So. While. The applicant wants to steer away from any conversation about the sale of alcohol from the proposed halfway house. Every example that they've provided, all seven are exactly that. So. In your opinion. Does seven halfway houses? Is is are is that adequate based on the information that you've developed? To conclude that it is customary?
Well, based on what the applicant has produced and the fact that there are a hundred and twenty-two. Eighteen and more whole golf courses in New Jersey, that's a rarity. That halfway houses, at least according to the data presented to the board, um is a as a bona fide accessory use.
Okay, and.
The 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 parallel instance is that the issue of distance in terms of mitigating the impact. Uh is a typical land use factor. Private clubs uh as a conditional use in your ordinance. Says that there must be a twenty-five-foot buffer as one of the conditions. And as I said, the trees that are in the setback don't constitute a buffer because there's essentially no level. Uh no lower level vegetation. A commercial recreation facility. Uh as a conditional use in some zone is required to have a setback of a hundred and twenty-five feet from the property line. That's a legislative recognition that greater distances will mitigate adverse impacts. Um so I I guess the best way to summarize uh my observa- and and then I I'll go back to the fact that. Uh you have a tree removal ordinance, you want to save trees, you don't have an accurate count of what trees are going to be removed. And and that includes the area by the proposed halfway house as well as following the trenching line. Uh where the utilities are going to run uh clearly going through a forested area. None of the trees are identified. That's simply a a fundamental issue if West Orange cares about even having a tree ordinance. So the the best way I can summarize my observations is that. Number one, the board has discretion on a site plan. If if this is it turns out to be a site plan with no variance reliefs. That doesn't mean you have to approve this site plan. Every application you've had, the one earlier this evening. The West Orange Plaza, you've manipulated the site plan in ways that don't necessarily relieve a variance. That's an inherent part of your power. Um so that the board clearly has the ability to say, this is a bad place. Uh for a halfway house that potentially serves alcohol. You have insufficient information both on the wetlands and tree removal. And those are fundamental purposes in a site plan. Alcohol, the potential for sa- serving alcohol, in my opinion, is a fundamental land use factor. That because the applicant says they may do it, I think it's essential that the board considers it at this phase. Unless the applicant says, we withdraw that part of the application. We're not going to solve alcohol. Then we'll look at this again, but as it stands now, the applicant is not doing that. And finally, because of the proximity and unusual nature of a halfway house that serves alcohol, in my opinion. It should not be considered a permissible accessory use to this golf course. That's my interpretation. Um the applicant, in my opinion, has not provided sufficient information to indicate otherwise. And that's a fundamental issue because if it's not a permitted use. Uh this part of the application can only be heard as a use variance before the Board of Adjustment.
Um just asking a couple follow-up questions. So um. At the, I believe it was at the last hearing, uh it was Mr. Is it Pestolano?
Pestolano.
Mr. Pestolano was the applicant's planner. And I asked him specifically if the proximity of the location mattered to residential. Um property lines. And he said, my recollection is that he said that it did not. Tennis, the two-prong analysis that the board must apply. Asks, the first question is, is this a customary incidental permitted use? But the second question asks um the impact of this proposed halfway house. On the surrounding area, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so um. I I know that that's, you know, the battle of the experts. So I just want to make sure that you're.
He said it wasn't relevant. I think it is very well relevant and the Tanis case underscores its rel- uh underscores its relevancy.
Okay, just one moment if I if I can. I just want to make sure we covered everything. The accessory. I thi- I think that I I don't think I have any further questions of you. Uh Mr. Stack, thank you.
I'm relieved.
Mr. Chair, I have um, I don't know if you want the board to ask questions first, and I have a few questions of Mr. Stack as well.
I I just have one question for Ms. Bennett. Are you done with Mr. Stack?
I I just have one question for Ms. Bennet. Are you done with Mr. Stack?
Um depending on the questions that the board asks, depending on cross, uh I may have some redirect, but.
Okay, so Mr. Stack, is is the halfway house a um an accessory use?
It may be, but because of the specifics of this application, in my opinion, it is not a permitted accessory use because of the uniqueness of serving alcohol and its proximity to residential properties.
If this did not serve alcohol, would it be a permitted use?
Permitted accessory use.
A permitted accessory use.
Accessory use. Um let's see.
This is right out of Tanis.
It's it it the 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 distance is still relevant and and.
Well, is it a per- permitted or not?
It would, in my opinion, the way this is framed, because it's so close to a residential property line, it is not a permitted accessory use even without alcohol.
So is that 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 that's your opinion? That's not Tanis, is it?
Customary accessory use.
Tanis didn't give a number. It said that the distance is a relevant consideration. The impact on the neighbors is a relevant consideration.
Right.
Because because in Tanis, the people wanted to put an airstrip on a on a farmland.
Right. So this is an airstrip because the person who owned the land was a a piper cub owner. And so Tanis is not direct here. The the concept is, is it a permitted accessory use? If it had no alcohol and it's a building with two bathrooms, is it?
Point of clarification, it's a customary accessory use, permitted customary.
Tanis says exactly, permitted accessory use of the of the farmland property. Is this a permitted accessory use? Not, it doesn't say customary. If you want to, if you want to.
Our code does.
If you want to. If you want to cite it, cite it. Then you have.
You have to cite it in contemplation with our code.
Right here. I have it right here. I'm reading exactly.
I understand.
Okay, good. So.
You have to thread the code.
Let's, you didn't cite the code, you said this, and I'm citing this. And I'm asking, is this, you're an expert, Mr. Stack, is this a permitted accessory use? Let's use one thing at a time, so the board will understand.
You cannot s- simply say, is this categorically an accessory use? Because Tanis says you have to take into account the impact on the community. You cannot separate it.
Is the is the, and how do you describe a community?
The nearest residential property line.
Okay, and so the the uh the golf course as a taxpayer is not part of the community is what you're telling me.
I didn't say that, but but the 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 answer is the the golf course controls, you know, it it's it's putting its halfway house where it for its own interests thinks it's the best location. In my opinion, it is ignoring the interest of the neighbors.
I got you. Okay, I but so then we come down to it is an accessory use because in your previous testimony, you provided an alternate location for this accessory use.
If it flipped to, let's let's say for exam- I I I know talking to my client that if this flipped to the other side of the fairway where there's a wooded area and already a paved path, that distance would be a fundam- I can tell you that at least I think my client would not be opposed to this application if it were flipped to the other side of the fairway.
So so then, what I'm understanding, and I want the board to hear this, this is, in your opinion, a permitted accessory use as long as it's not in that location.
And then maybe, now if you put it next to someone else's house, I'm not going to like say it's okay. But I, my opinion is, where it is proposed tonight, it is not a permitted accessory use.
So the portion of Tanis that you're right, you're citing is distance to the uh another area of the community. Not that it is not an accessory use, because if you said if they flipped it onto the other side of the fairway, it would be okay.
I'm saying you cannot, you cannot separate the analysis independently. They're both interrelated. This is not a free, wh- when someone says, I'm going to a golf course and they have a halfway house, most people would not say, great, I can buy drinks there. It's an unusual uh feature of a golf course in New Jersey, and the applicant hasn't proved otherwise. So that's half of the issue. And the other half is the proximity to a residential property line. They both make this, number one, highly unusual, and number two, offensive and detrimental to the adjacent residential properties.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that, Ms. Bennet, Mr. Stack, uh Ms. John Basta.
Sure, um Mr. Stack used presenting exhibit earlier this evening that was dated March sixth, twenty twenty-four. Is that correct?
Yes.
And tonight was the first time that the board, this was presented to the board. Is that correct?
Yes.
Was there a reason why you didn't file it with the board in advance at tonight's meeting to provide the board and the applicant an opportunity to review it?
Um. No, there's no reason. I just, I I I don't believe an objector has to submit uh information in advance. I think the applicant does, but I don't think an objector does. And the the essential testimony was already there. We already raised the issue of the wetlands. I just wanted to give some coloration to it.
So Ms. McGovern.
Just I I, Ms. McGovern, Mr. uh Mr. Chair, can I please have an opportunity to ask my questions without being interrupted? I gave the courtesy to Ms. Bennet. I deserve the same right.
I'm raising an objection. I I apologize for not saying objection. I'm raising an objection to the idea that you suggest that an objector needs to.
I asked a question. I asked a question why it wasn't, no.
Hearing. I wanted to know why you're talking over me. I'm just trying to put the objection on the record.
Stop. Ms. Bennet, she asked a question.
And I objected to it.
I.
And I'm just asking for Ms. McGovern to clarify that I have no obligation to provide anything in advance of the hearing.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Ms. Bennet is being so obstructive to this proceedings. Can she be muted during my cross of Mr. Stack and reserve her objections until I'm done?
I have the right to object.
Ms. McGovern, Ms. McGovern.
Yes.
She's objecting to her question. It was a reasonable question. That's all that was done. She's objecting to the answer to the question.
Yeah, the the, there's, you're you're, it's competing issues. On one hand, part across examination is to raise intent and credibility issues and the like. And on the other hand, you're taking it as a very literal requirement, which Mr. Stack is correct. There's no requirement in the uh state stat- statute specifically that you're to submit something within ten days if you're objecting. Doesn't anticipate that, but it is a good practice. It is a very good practice.
If I had a copy of it, I would have provided it.
Okay, Ms. John Basta, let's move on, please.
Next question, uh Mr. Stack, you presented photos. Where were those photos taken from?
Uh from the backyards of the neighbors. You you can see on the exhibit, I put numbers and that's where I was standing when I took the photos.
Okay, so it wasn't on the actual golf course itself?
No.
And um you stated earlier you are not a a specialist in wetlands. Is that correct?
I already said that.
Do you have any New Jersey license in civil engineering?
No.
Are you um a licensed practicing attorney in the state of New Jersey?
No.
Do you, were you present and did you hear the testimony of the applicants, professionals and um agreement that it would submit for an LOI if the board were to approve this application?
I I know that that's your statement.
Okay, do you heard that the applicant would as a condition of approval agree?
You're representing the applicant and you said that that the applicant would submit an LOI.
Okay, so you did hear that.
I I just said that I heard it.
Great. Um as far as the Tanis, you made an indication and reference of the the golf courses that the applicants submitted, that it was seven out of a hundred and twenty-two golf courses in the state of New Jersey that the applicants submitted evidence that there were similar halfway houses with liquor license. Is that an accurate statement?
No.
Can you repeat what you said or the gist of what you were trying to state?
No, I don't understand. You're uh recalling my testimony, what you said. Let me maybe restate it. The applicant's planner uh believes that this halfway house uh that may serve alcohol is an a permissible accessory use to the golf course based on data that you supplied to him of seven golf courses. Um I guess within about a twenty-mile radius that happened to have liquor licenses for selling alcohol in a halfway house. Part of the Tanis issue is, you know, it is, for example, in the um in the Tanis case, and 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 I know that we're not going to land plans here, planes here. In the Tanis case, they said like there are seventy private uh airstrips in New Jersey. And despite that number, it is not a permissible accessory use. Here, the only evidence that the applicant presented is that there are seven golf courses. They happen to be within uh about a twenty-mile ra- radius, and there are probably about thirty-nine total in that twenty-mile radius. But that doesn't show that it is a customary. If there are a hundred and twenty-two in my, by my count, golf courses in New Jersey that have at least eighteen holes, you would think there would be a proclivity with eighteen holes to have a halfway house, not with a nine-hole golf course. So my point is that the, I think your witness has provided insufficient information to render a credible opinion that this is a permission, permissible, permission, permissible accessory use. And he says that distance has no bearing on it, which I think bears.
I'm on, I'm, thank you. I I didn't ask that. I'm on the, I'm on the.
Bears on his credibility, if I can finish my answer.
On the number of of golf courses that have halfway houses, did you see the Oprah request that was submitted to the ABC and how many licenses were were requested? Was it?
I don't recall the exact wording of the Oprah request, but I did see it.
Do you know if it was seven copies of licenses for seven different facilities or a hundred and twenty-two facilities?
Uh I don't know. All I know is that the evidence produced by your office and handed to Mr. Pestolano uh was for seven halfway houses.
So you don't recall that seven ABC licensed were asked Open Public Records for and seven of those were returned what halfway houses?
Uh all, I guess the exhibit speaks for itself. I did read the Oprah request. It's one of the exhibits. I don't recall exactly what it said.
Have you done any independent uh reviews or research related to the hundred and twenty-two golf courses in the state of New Jersey? And how many of them might have halfway houses?
I did not because it's the burden of the applicant to approve their case.
So, Mr. Stack, how many golf courses out of a hundred and twenty-two was the applicant required to demonstrate had halfway houses in order for you to feel comfortable that this is customary, a halfway house is customary to a golf course?
Uh it doesn't have to be the majority, but again, you can't look at the numbers absent the proximity to residential property lines. They are both important considerations.
So yeah, you are familiar with Tanis. You cited it multiple times. Are you familiar with the statement within Tanis that says that the fact that a use is not customarily indulgent, however, is not conclusive? And even if the use in question is found in a small percentage of similar main uses, that use may still be found to be customary?
Yes, I understand that. But you can't consider that without looking at the entire decision. There are two aspects to this that must be considered, and it depends upon the nature of the use.
Um and so we are before the the planning board. Did you see Mr. Greigle, the board's professional planners memo indicating that in his professional opinion, a halfway house is customary and incidental to the golf course?
I saw the memo. He produced that without seeing any of the evidence uh that was presented during these proceedings.
And you made statements about the township code um presuming that this is a permitted accessory use, and that's why we're before the planning board. Is it your professional opinion that the board may request greater setbacks requirements than the code itself requires?
Oh, yes, for under the site plan provisions, certainly the board has the ability to do that.
Under the municipal land use law, do you know what body has the exclusive power to zone?
The governing body.
And in this instance, in the R two district, what is the minimum rear yard setback requirement?
I think it's forty-five feet.
And the applicant's proposing its structure at how many feet?
Um I think that it's just short of seventy feet, if I recall.
So it's greater than what's
Yes.
Required by code.
If you just want to put up a building there, um that's that's doesn't reflect what the nature of this application is.
But in Tanis, Tanis, they consider the impact on the residents and ultimately determines that the use was not customary. Is that a correct reading of the case?
Yes.
Okay, but in this instance, if the board were inclined to decide that this was a customary use, then would it not be a requirement or wouldn't it be outside of the board's authority to require greater setbacks than are than are required by the township code?
No, because it relates to whether it's a permissible accessory use. If it uh again, you cannot separate the two halves of the test in the Tanis decision, in my opinion.
You're speaking of a use, but I'm speaking of location and setbacks.
But they're interrelated. Tanis says you must consider the impact on the community.
It adds to whether the use is customary and incidental there too.
It it if you, there are two tests. Again, if 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 thirty-three percent of of the the golf courses had halfway houses that served alcohol, and you were proposing one here two feet from a residential property line, I think the board has the ability to say, despite the frequency of that use, looking at the proximity means that it cannot be considered a permissible accessory use.
Mr. Stack, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McGovern.
Yes. Uh we are at eleven twenty-five P M.
I I I I think we're uh all sort of needing a rest. That's the way I see it.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to open this? I mean, we have, this application has been filed since January. We granted, we granted, we carry the application based on Ms. Bennet's request last month. This time we flipped the agenda so that Ms. Ms. Bennet and Mr. Stack could be available. Could could I please just indulge, like, could the board just please indulge having this matter continue a little bit further and see how much public might be out there that that has questions if we could possibly conclude?
I got it. Okay, let's let's have the uh, let's do this. Do any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Stack? Let's start there. Any members of the board, raise your hand. Do you have any questions for Mr. Stack? Seeing none. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Stack?
Mr. Chair.
Chairman.
I'm sorry, who's talking?
Uh Councilman Rutherford.
Uh Council President Rutherford, go right ahead, sir.
Uh thank you, sir. Um I, this is really directed to the, to you, Mr. Chair, I guess, uh to you as well, Mrs. McGovern. Um can our professionals working in uh on the classification of the wetlands, particularly on the residential side of the property line? Uh like, can they, you know, speak to the extent to which wetlands extend beyond the golf course?
I think that would be Mr. Hess. And I think he did make a, he did make a finding.
Yeah, the uh the plans show that the wetlands go towards the uh, towards the adjoining property lines. It doesn't, I don't see, I'm looking at a set now, and I don't see that they show the extent in terms of how far. the extent in terms of how far it projects onto the adjoining property.
Is it, so and listen, I'm a layman, so I really don't know, but it sounds like there, these wetlands haven't been classified as either intermediate or extraordinary yet. Did I? Well, I know that someone said they were intermediate, but is that a final classification or is that?
There, there, there was a site visit by an environmental scientist who was hired by the, by the applicant. And he did a delineation of what he felt was the wetlands boundary. And then based on his observation of the wetlands, he made a determination that it was, in his opinion, that it was intermediate value wetlands and would require a 50 foot buffer. The only way to get a definitive answer is to file an application with the DEP for wetlands letter of interpretation. And in that letter, the DEP will confirm the delineation or tell the applicant that they need to make certain adjustments. And the DEP will also set forth the classification of the wetlands. So if, right now, the applicant is proceeding with the application based on a 50 foot buffer for an intermediate resource wetlands. If, and any approval by the board is conditioned upon DEP granting of the wetlands LOI. If the DEP finds that the wetlands are exceptional resource value and require 150 foot buffer, then the applicant cannot proceed with the project and has to come back before the board.
So would that classification have to be made? Would that have to be requested by the objector or would that be requested by the applicant or how?
It would be requested by the board through a condition in the resolution that the applicant would then have to make sure that the DEP come in, do the inspection and do their own review and give their opinion. Once their opinion is given, so you don't hold up an application. Typically, what you do in a case like this is the board determines the case on the merits, whether it satisfied the site plan requirements. There are no variances here. It's just a matter of whether it's satisfied the site plan requirements. And before a shovel can go in the ground, they have to prove that they've gotten this release from the DEP.
Ms. McGovern, that, that condition, though, is only in appropriate instances, correct? It's not by right.
It, it would depend on whatever the resolution is states and whatever the determination of the board is. And I think what you're referring to is whether this is an accessory use.
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm saying that your conditioned approval would only occur in appropriate instances. For example, the board could decide this is not an appropriate instance.
Yes.
A conditioned approval. Because let's say there's a DEP pending investigation that will delineate the wetland boundaries fairly quickly.
It's, it's up to the board to make that determination as to whether they want to wait for the DEP decision or to go forward, but, but it's problematic because this has been filed for a while and typically the DEP would prefer not to have to weigh in on things when things aren't granted. They, why send their resources and their people to examine something unless they know a structure is potentially going to be built there? So it's often the better practice for the DEP to know, we have to go look at this because something is proposed to be built.
That's, I heard something very different from the DEP, but I defer to your, I guess, you know.
Council President Rutherford.
I have a couple more, just I don't, I didn't see, and I, you know, this is quite voluminous, but I, I did not see any animals listed as, you know, being endangered and living in this particular space. Did I miss something?
I don't think there's been any allegation that there's any potential animal, special species that'll be endangered. I haven't seen that either.
But I'm sure that when the neighbors, when, when, when the public is permitted to speak, they can speak about what they see in our backyards.
Are we allowed to accept testimony from neighbors as, you know, eyewitness testimony saying this is a particular endangered species, Mrs. McGovern?
Well, it would depend on their expertise. So we would have
Right, if they're just not, they're regular, they have a regular life, they don't, they're not an expert in endangered species, we can't.
And they may say, they, somebody could say, I see a really pretty bird on a regular basis. That's not really, that's not enough, you know, you but if I'm a bird scientist and I happen to live in the neighborhood and I know that this specific species is there, they would qualify that. They would have to be qualified as that.
And then Councilman Rutherford, as part of the DEP's review, who has special expertise in this matter, they would be reviewing that as part of the application process.
Thank you, Ms. John Bost, Bosta, sorry. The objectors expert said there's insufficient info on tree removal. I, I thought, you know, in my review, and again, I'm handicapped tonight, as you can tell by not even being on video. I thought there was some information on the trees that were going to be removed around the structure. Is that not true?
They did submit a tree removal permit.
So why would that be insufficient?
That's the allegation of Ms. Bennett.
No, it's not my allegation. My expert put on the record that the entire area of the sanitation line has not indicated any tree disturbance or root disturbance. He also pointed out during his testimony that there was a tree directly in conflict with the overhang of the building that was not indicated as a tree that would be removed. I mean, I, I, we could ask him to
I do recall that testimony in the prior planning board meeting. I, I mean, that, you know, so I do understand that that particular tree, you know, may need to be cut down and it was not indicated. All right. But that's satisfactory to me. Last thing I had is that there was some testimony about greater distances from property lines mitigating adverse impacts. With this being 65 feet from the nearest property line, and I think the code is 40 or 45 feet, what is the, what is the issue? Is it noise? Is it garbage? What is the impact that we're trying to mitigate? I mean, golf balls are still going to come onto resident properties, so that whether this halfway house is there or not. So what is the adverse impact that we're trying to mitigate by even moving it to the adjusted 75 feet, which would, even if it was an extraordinary classified, is as an extraordinary wetland using the expert's testimony, it could go back to 75 feet. Like, what are we trying to mitigate against?
Just as a point of correction, he said that would, if it was an extraordinary resourced value wetlands, it would extend the buffer to 150 feet. So it would, I mean, that's, that was his, but are you asking Mr. Steck? If you're asking Mr. Steck what the issue is, I mean.
I'm just trying to understand whoever is the best situated to tell me what the adverse impact is. And I do believe it was Mr. Steck that said there could be an averaging method of some sort that would have it at 75 feet. Mr. Steck, I'm happy to hear your response.
Okay, so there, there are two issues. One of them is, you're right, that, that, let's say, first of all, we don't have a wetland expert who testified. We have a line on a plan that someone put on the plan, but there is no expert that testified how this line was determined. And there is no expert that could be cross-examined to find out how it was determined. There are two variables here. One is exactly where are the limits of the wetlands? So a, a DEP representative would come out, take some soil borings, look at the vegetation and the water and say, well, the wetlands are really bigger than when the applicant says. So that's the first issue. And then the second issue is the nature of the wetlands. How important is it for conservation purposes? And there are certain tests, certain standards, and if it is extraordinary, then instead of a 50 foot buffer, it has to go to 150 feet from wherever the wetlands end. Now, the, what I said before is the applicant has the ability to buffer average. But the answer is even if the applicant buffer averaged and it was 150 feet, the building would still violate the standard. The other issue, the parallel issue on distance is what is the impact on the neighborhood? Let me give you a simple example. Let's say the applicant regularly trims trees and grinds the branches, and you know, that's a noisy thing. That's an accessory used to a golf course. If you have a lot of trees, you got to do that. You got to manage it. If the applicant set up a chipper 45 feet from the property line and regularly chipped trees, tree branches there, that would be very obnoxious. And one could argue while chipping branches is part of running a golf course in that location, it is not accessory. It's, it's unusual to have it that proximate to a residential property line. So the, the, the linear distance is twofold. It has to do with the wetlands, but independently of that, it's the proximity of a something that may serve alcohol in proximity to a residential property line. They both are distances, but they both have different subjects.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm not understanding how, even if they were to serve alcohol, how that is an adverse impact. It's not like the golf course is running all night long. They're not going to have, you know, wrongness.
React differently. For example, it's legitimate in a zoning ordinance to say that I have a zone that permits, you know, restaurants. But it's legitimate to say not, I don't want any bars in this, in this, in this zone. It's, it's a legitimate land use distinction. And, and, and it's because there are different considerations. If you serve alcohol, it means that there's a concern about minors consuming alcohol. There's concern about people that may not be as ambulant, have as coordination. There are, there's an issue of policing, you know, a bartender has to tell you, you know, you've had enough kind of thing. Well, it, all of those considerations revolve around the consumption of alcohol, and it's, it, it's a different flavor to the land use and an important one, in my opinion.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. I, Mr. Chair, I am concerned about the wetlands, and I, I don't, I don't know that, and I actually, you know, I'm not an expert in this, so I don't know, but it sounds like Mrs. McGovern is saying that the issues around the wetlands can be addressed in the conditions. And if all of those issues can be addressed, you know, in the conditions, then I, you know, I don't, I'm not, I'm done with my questions. I would like to see them addressed in the conditions if we do go forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council President, Mayor McCartney. And this is the last one. We're going to have to have another meeting. It is way past everybody's bedtime.
Chairman, there's members of the public who have been
I got it, but you, Ms. Bennett, at this hour, nothing reasonable is happening. The board, the, the reason that people ask questions is that the board hears information that we can manage and make sense of at 11:41. We have to be reasonable with members, we have to be
Understood.
reasonable with the members of the board.
Understood. I'm just joining Ms. John Bosta in asking for
I got it. We did, we did. Mayor McCartney. You're, you're muted, Mayor.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I said there seems to be a heavy concentration on alcohol. And I recall testimony by the applicant about women looking for a bathroom at the 12th hole. You know, and maybe getting a snack. I don't recall the heavy concentration on the alcohol, though may now or in the future serve alcohol. These are golfers that are moving along the course, not hanging out at a bar. And there was so much talk about this Tannis case. You're asking us to compare women's bathrooms or bathroom station with an airstrip? I don't, I'm having a problem with that. And, and is there, Ms. John Basta, is there landscaping? Will there be landscaping around this?
Yes. Yes, Mayor.
Or I want to ask, or at the property line, where the residents, we've heard from residents?
Mayor, this question came up previously, and the applicant stipulated as a condition of approval, it would work with the board's professionals to place additional landscaping along the property boundary line, so we're perfectly amenable to that. And, and to the, to the point that's been raised. Currently, there's a golf course that's there, it's been there since the 1800. It has always served alcohol. And golfers can be on carts today with alcohol. So I don't know how this is changing the character or nature of what's happening. I
Chairman, I object to that. They're only allowed to serve the alcohol from the clubhouse.
Bennett, she, she can say what she wants, just like you can say what you want.
I'm just objecting to what she proffers as factually accurate or not. She shouldn't be misleading the board.
Thank you. My question was about the buffer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, is there a way to try to finish the questioning on Mr. Steck because he is a very busy professional, and I don't want it to come that the next hearing, he's not available for us to finish him.
Do any members of the, any other members of the board have any questions for Mr. Stack? Seeing none. Do any members of the public have questions for Mr. Stack? Please raise your hand and be identified. We're keeping this to three minutes, three minutes a person. If it's a duplicate, if it's a duplicate question, I'm going to ask you to move on, but thank you very much. Three minutes a person.
David Robinson. Please state your name and address for the record. Sorry.
My name is David Robinson, 39 Old Indian Road.
Welcome, Mr. Robinson.
Yes, very late. I just have one quick question for Mr. Stack. And from where I live at 39 Old Indian Road, there is an outlet of water that flows into the wetlands. Originally, when I spoke, the board was unaware of that because the planner, the developer, whoever did not make that part of the, they were just unaware of it. They never came to our property to look. So my question is, should that have been part of the original plan?
Yes, I, it, the two things. The identification of wetlands is a requirement when you file for a site plan application. So number one, it should have been there. And number two, there should be an expert who testifies about how it was determined so that we can, the board members can decide whether his or her testimony is credible. We now have a delineation, but we don't have any, in, any confidence, in my opinion, that it indicates both the, the accurate extent of the wetlands or the type of wetlands. So it's, in my opinion, it's fundamental information. Because it's, it's, the applicant is not willing to shift this location. And so it's a, it's essentially a do or die issue.
Okay, based on that statement and based on the fact that it was never even part of the plan, a major flow into the golf course from my property, I submit that the whole entire application is flawed. And it needs to, it needs the attention, you know, that it deserves. And lastly, I, I am by no means an expert to go to to the zoo often, but I can tell you, in my backyard, there are flamingos, there are
Mr. Chair, this is, this is time for questions of Mr. Stack. Can we leave it to questions, not comments?
I, I agree with, you can ask Mr. Stack a question about his testimony, sir.
I got you. All right, based, based on
Excuse me, Chairman. Chairman, his time should not be told while, while the expert is speaking, but he can ask the expert if a flamingo is an endangered species, if an eagle
It's, oh, Mr. Stack is not an expert on endangered species. Move on. Mr. Robinson, do you have any other questions, sir?
Uh, uh, just Uh, uh, just basically, um, just a statement that.
Uh, statement later, Mr. Robinson, statements later, please.
Okay, all right, got it. All right.
Uh, m- mister, wait, hang on a second. Um, Mr. Hess, I had an answer to your question and you uh, Ms. Bennett, I had asked uh Mr. Roemeyer, a member of Mr. Hess's firm to contact uh uh Ms. Um, our, our, our borough engineer. They looked at your property, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Hess wrote a letter to the planning board. Mr. Hess, do you have a copy of that letter about the drainage?
I do.
Can you, can you tell us what we fa- what you found um with that uh area?
Did they go on the property, Mr. Chair?
Uh, he, I I'm not sure, but uh, they went, uh, apparently the town engineer knows that area and so did Mr. Roemeyer. So let's see what they have to say.
Right, I discussed the uh, the drainage complaint with um with Zayabeth um Corbella, the municipal engineer. And I also reviewed the uh, the files on the project and the plans. So the concern that we received was that runoff from the proposed halfway house may increase the stormwater runoff onto the neighbor's property. And I I'm not aware of which property uh it is, other than that they live on uh Old Indian Road. So there was concern that the runoff from the halfway house may increase the runoff onto his property and into the township storm surge system. So we were asked to to research and what we found is first, the proposed halfway house has a floor area of only six hundred and twenty square feet. To put that in perspective, that would be like a thirty-foot by by uh thirty-foot garage. Quite small, which is really uh, the ru- the runoff from a roof area of six hundred and twenty square feet, in my opinion, is the min- would be de minimis. Also, the plans show that the roof drains from the halfway house would be connected to an infiltration basin. That infiltration basin will allow the runoff to recharge into the ground. The stormwater reports submitted by the applicant demonstrates that there would be no discharge from the infiltration basin during the two-year, ten-year, and hundred-year storms. So therefore, there would be absolutely no impact uh resulting from that runoff. And finally, the distance from the halfway house to the nearest existing residential development is a hundred and seventy-five feet, which is substantial. And uh, and then actually, finally, the grading plan also shows that if there were an overflow, that basin weren't installed, then the runoff from the halfway house would remain on the golf course property and would not be discharged off-site towards any of the existing residential dwellings. That's based on my review of the plans.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Mr. Robinson, I'm sorry we didn't get back to you sooner, but when you made that comment, it was important to the planning board to ensure that we found that information. Okay, um, do any other members of the public have any questions about Mr. Stack's testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Kevin Malanga. Please state your name. Good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Stack, good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Stack, the applicant submitted evidence that involves seven halfway houses. Is that correct?
Yes.
And.
With with with, that serve, serve alcohol.
Yes, that serve alcohol. And with that submission, there were maps and locations of those halfway houses. Is that right?
Yes.
Can you characterize the location of six of those ha- halfway houses as being distant from property lines?
They are um all distant from property lines. The s- the smallest uh distance was uh two hundred and forty feet of those. Uh, no, I'll take it one exception. There was one for a hundred and sixty-five feet to a residential property line. But to get to that residential property line, you had to cross over tennis courts and then a road. And then you came to the closest property line. So that was the closest one, but obviously, the 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 land use impacts um are modified because what goes in between. But a- among the seven where um there was nothing in between other than golf course, either fairway or or rough, the closest was uh two hu- the, here are the numbers, except for the one sixty-five that was across the golf course. They were two hundred and forty feet, three hundred and seventy feet, five hundred and ten feet, six hundred and seventy-five feet, a thousand feet, and three hundred feet. So all substantially greater to the residential property line than the approximate seventy feet that's being proposed.
So is it fair to say, Mr. Stack, that for halfway houses that are serving alcohol, it is customary for them to be located at a distance much greater than seventy feet?
I think that's a fair statement.
No other questions, Mr. Stack. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga. Do any other members of the public have any questions? But uh, questions for Mr. Stack, please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Lou, Lou P. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lou Pichano. I'm uh twenty-nine Old Indian Road. I'm at the very top of Old Indian. Uh, we have two lines on our property which are contiguous with the um golf course. So we see a lot of the golf course. Um, happily, Mr. Malanga just anticipated my exact first question, which would have been, you know, in summary, what is the closest of all the seven uh halfway houses that the applicant has submitted as evidence? And I think it's, it's pretty clear. Mr. Stack said it. Uh, they're all much, much further away uh from property lines, much significantly further away from property lines than the uh building being discussed here or being proposed here. Um, I would also just offer, I don't know, Mr. Stack, do we have any evidence how close to halfway any of those halfway houses are? In other words, it seems to me that, let me ask you, because I have to ask you a question. Where would roughly halfway on this golf course be? And I don't want to get deeply into physiological needs here or anything uh so um impolite, but wouldn't halfway house uh at the intersection of three or four golf cart paths roughly halfway on a very long golf course, and this is a very long golf course, be a more um, you've been using the right words, a more traditional, more standard place for a halfway house?
You know, I, well, uh halfway simply suggests
Yes.
that it's it's midterm. Again, a halfway house does no good if it's a thousand feet from the clubhouse.
Right.
So, so the answer is when you're fu- when you're far away, far away, again, it it really depends, I think on your distance to the clubhouse. And uh, I know of no rules that say it has to be on one side of the fairway or the other side of the fairway. Uh, in my experience, golfers tend to um uh sometimes hit balls uh off the fairway on either side. So it's not an issue of safety, it's an issue of convenience.
Right.
And and it's flexible. I I, you know, I I don't know of any rule that says it has to be exactly uh at the linear, let's say halfway point for the eighteen holes.
And of course, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think I'm gonna get cut off in a few seconds, but um, and I'm not suggesting it has to be or that there's a rule that it'd be at a halfway spot. I'm just suggesting that in terms of reasonable use and much more usefulness and utility value to the golf course, that nearer the center of the course where there are many other holes that are within, let's say, thirty-second access with an electric golf cart, just putting that out there, might be a much more convenient location. I'm also the person who collects and is impacted most by the errant golf ball. So we're not at all complaining about the errant golf balls. We bought the property because we live next to a golf course. We fully understand that. So let this not be construed as an objection to errant golf balls. It is an objection to the location of this um secondary restaurant is actually what I see it becoming. Um, could I ask you very quickly, um, I am not an ornithologist. I'm not a wildlife expert. I know you're not either. But in terms of um extraordinary use of wetlands, what sort of animal populations, what sort of use, I'm asking rhetorically?
Sorry, he didn't testify to that. Sir, he did not testify to that.
He did, he did. I beg your pardon. He did testify to the distinction between extraordinary and ordinary use, and he is an expert on that. So, Mr. Stack.
No, no, he he's not. He's not.
The clock isn't running either.
You just accepted his testimony on extraordinary use.
No, 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 we, he said he, he said.
Okay, I I look, I wanna say that mostly for comments anyway, because rhetorical question at this point.
Thank you.
You did just accept his testimony on extraordinary use.
A- as far as fifty feet to a hundred and fifty feet, that's it. Not about, not about wildlife.
I'd like to save the rest for comments.
Thank you. Does any, any other member of the public have any uh question for Mr. Stack on his testimony?
Yes, we do. We have Donna and Alan. Please state your name and address for the record.
This is, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, uh, I'm Donna Graham and I, and I'm at thirty-one Old Indian Road, West Orange. Alan?
Alan Graham, thirty-one Old Indian Road in West Orange.
Yes, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Stack. Uh, Mr. Stack, um is there a site plan for this particular project that shows all the trees that will be removed for the building of the halfway house?
There is not.
Okay. Is there a site plan that shows all the trees that will have to be removed and the tree root systems that will be damaged for the building of the sewer line for the halfway house?
There is not.
If these root systems are damaged by the sewer line, is there any remediation possible?
Well, the uh standards are that the applicant is to identify the trees that are removed. Uh, the board has the ability to flex the location of the lines, in my opinion, as part of its site plan powers. And if trees have to be removed, there are formulas for replacements.
Okay, now, if trees do have their roots, their root systems damaged, uh, are they likely to die as a result of that?
Mr. Chair, Peter Stack is qualified as as an expert in prof- professional planning. He's not a tree expert. He's not a civil engineer. He's not a wetlands expert. Can we, can we
Yeah, move on.
Keep the questioning to planning?
Yes, next question.
All right, my next question is, uh, Mr. Stack, in your um considerable experience, when you see similar site plans for projects like this, do those site plans generally indicate specifically and clearly every single tree that has to be removed because of the project?
Uh, the West Orange Tree Removal Ordinance requires the identification of trees that are gonna be removed. And with respect to golf courses, particularly trees within seventy-five feet of the perimeter.
Okay, so, Mr. Stack, in your opinion, is this plan as submitted without the specific the specific specificity of the trees that are going to be removed, is it adequate as it stands?
In my opinion, it is not.
Thank you, Mr. Stack.
Thank you.
Chairman, I remind you that Mr. Graham, Alan Graham, requires the assistance of his wife and has his own.
With me for a second here. What is my, you have to excuse me for one second, please. What do we got over there? I'm I'm visually impaired, so I require help here. Mr. Stack, I really appreciate your input today. Um, I just wanted to say, this is a, a very the E C C is very lucky to have a very valuable resource.
Please ask a question. Please ask a question, sir.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for my wife to find my question. She can't find it right now, so we'll move on.
Uh, what's that mean?
Well.
You wanna come back?
Let, yeah, let me come back later, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Stack about his testimony?
No.
Okay, wait for you, sir. Megan, is he coming back? Did he leave?
I can send a message.
Yeah, send, send a message.
I will do that. I'm doing that right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you you'll sign my timesheet for overtime?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank, thank you.
And it's, and an extra Starbucks.
Okay, the the message that I received back was that Alan has no further questions.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, now we're gonna go to public comment.
No, no, no. Oh.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. I I misunderstood you before. I thought we were just finishing Mr. Smith. That's okay.
Yeah, I wanna see how far we get.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stack. We're done. Uh, do any members of the public have any comment? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have uh Donna and Alan Graham again.
Great, three minutes, please.
Okay.
I I'm sorry, um, Chairman. I thought we were finishing with Mr. Stack and then finishing for the evening and then returning for summations and public comment. I thought that's, but if if you wanna keep go- I see there's man waving. I see there's a board member just waving.
I think he's giving the thumbs up.
Oh, got it, got it. Okay. But keep going? Are you saying keep going?
Yes.
Go for it.
Right.
Yeah, a couple of you are, okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go for it.
This is Donna Graham at thirty-one Old Indian Road again. I'd like to note that all the affected residents of Old Indian Road have not objected to all of the proposed E C C C site changes with one exception, the pro- the proposed location of the halfway house. And we are unanimous in this objection. There are several reasons I strongly object to its proposed locate, proposed location. First, the disturbance of the wetlands. These wetlands support numerous flora and fauna and serve as a watershed into the Rahway River. Good stewardship means protection of these wetlands. The animals supported there include foxes, coyotes, deer, frogs, turtles, and birds of prey, including eagles, an endangered species. The presence of eagles, which I have personally observed at least three times soaring right above these wetlands, would qualify the wetlands as having exceptional resource value, which requires a much larger area around them to be preserved from development. It appears that the country club's current plan for the location of the halfway house violates the larger undeveloped perimeter required for wetlands of exceptional resource value. I am frankly appalled by the action the E C C has, C C C has already taken over the last several years to clear underbrush and trees from these wetlands, and I've reported these activities to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. I understand that a D E P investigator very recently tried to obtain access to the E C C C property to investigate the country club's damages to the wetlands. But the D E P investigator was denied access. Why? What are they hiding? Could it be that the country club knows that their damages to the wetlands are illegal and that they wish to hide the fact? If this board approves a location of the halfway house as it is, much too near exceptional wetlands, won't you, the board, be complicit in this illegal activity? Second, Mr. Stack indicated in his testimony that site plans in the sewer line are lacking clear indication of all the trees that will have to be removed. Third, the location of this halfway house interferes with our right to quiet enjoyment of our properties. This right is already degraded by the presence of loud, profane golfers whose noisy conversations and arguments often disturb us as they pass by our properties. This answer, that answers Mr. Rutherford's questions. But adding the halfway house and bar in view of our properties and so close to our property lines will worsen this situation. The halfway house will be a destination for groups of golfers where they will only continue the loud disturbances we currently suffer. And alcohol can only increase the volume of their conversations. So I asked the members of the planning board, and this, these are rhetorical questions. Don't you have a responsibility to consider the wishes of the residents of Old Indian Road who have been very cooperative, objecting only to the location of the halfway house? And not to any other site changes? Don't you have a responsibility to the environment to ensure that wetlands and the flora and fauna they support are preserved? Don't you have a responsibility? Don't you have a responsibility to ensure that the West Orange Tree Ordinance is upheld by all developers? Clearly, the ECCC did not consider this ordinance when it failed to include all trees that will be affected by its plans. Finally, I ask you, the planning board members, to ask yourselves, would you like a building with restrooms and a bar close to your property line? Would you like more loud pedestrian traffic passing by your backyard? Would you like your local environment to be damaged or destroyed? I suspect all of you would answer a resounding no. I therefore ask you to reject the plans for the halfway house in the location currently proposed. Thank you.
You very much.
And, uh, this is Alan Graham. I echo what Donna just said. And, uh, I have been here thirty years. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
No, I'm just asking for the clock to be started.
Okay, I can't, something I have to do or what?
No, no, you keep talking, start talking.
Thank you. I've been here for over thirty years. I've seen, uh, the quality of golfers and guests complete deteriorate greatly, especially within the last ten, ten or twelve years. Rude, loud, um, obnoxious and profane. I myself have not had beer bottles thrown in my property, unlike my neighbors. Golf, golf balls I don't care about, but the conversations very loud. I'm blind and visually impaired, and we have a number of events here. And all of a sudden, I'm sh, ushering blind and visually impaired people from throughout the country into my house when golfers are nearby, knowing that there's going to be abuse of language, um, publicly displayed. I would halfway house would just make it worse, I believe. And that's all I have to say at the moment. But I have seen many frogs, birds, all the things that my wife said, even though I'm blind and visually impaired. Uh, when, when a hawk lands almost on my head, I know something's wrong. Um, anyway, that's it for now.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Do any other members of the public have any comments on this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we do. We have Lou P.
There's a rule about speaking. You don't want to.
Sorry, state your name and address for the record, please.
Lou Cacciano, twenty-nine Old Indian Road.
Thank you.
And the rule is you don't want to follow something that perfect when everything has been said so exactly and perfectly. So I'm not going to attempt even, and I'm not going to waste the board's time with repeating uh, what Donna and Alan just said so perfectly. Okay, they echo almost precisely what I was going to respond to. I'll start first, I'll make it very brief to Mr. Rutherford's comment. It's funny, we both keyed into that. We're very, very concerned about the wetlands. I'm more concerned about the wetlands than I expected I would be. But now that we understand them better, we're much more concerned with them. Um, the placement of a secondary restaurant down the slope from us does very much change the nature of our environment here. It very much does affect our quiet enjoyment. I wrote down exactly the same phrase as someone was speaking earlier. So we really, um, just cannot support the location of this halfway house, uh, where the golf course wants to put it. Um, in terms of establishing how valuable the wetlands are, again, I had no idea about it myself. Researching the history of it a little bit, that we are the headwaters of the Rahway River, I think is extremely important. And that alone is a very good basis for protecting the wetlands. Then adding to that, the fact that, again, I'm not a bird or a conservation expert, but I myself have seen several pairs of nesting hawks in the back, all of which are dependent on the highest trees in their environment. So they're extremely dependent on all the trees on your golf course. My neighbors have seen eagles, which has led me to do a little bit of research into this. So sourcing directly the New Jersey, um, DEP, which maintains a website of nesting eagle pairs. There is one only a few miles away from here. Their range is extremely large. Again, I'm, I'm not an expert on their hunting radius, but they depend on water, they depend on wetlands, and New Jersey is very happy that its birds of prey, its raptors are coming back. I'll add that I'm old enough to know, uh, to remember the chloroethane, um, pollution, which was killing all the red-tailed hawks in New Jersey. So we're very happy to have them back. I think ECCC should be very happy to be in a position, perhaps put up some webcams or something, to now suddenly be stewards of the raptors and the return of the wildlife to the area, which you should be all about supporting. I'll also say that I've personally seen, we've only been here about two years. We have a, a fox den in our backyard. We have seen, obviously, everyone's seen many, many deer, but I've seen all manner and all varieties of turtles, the foxes, the hawks. I've seen every variety of North American woodpecker in my own backyard. All of these are dependent on the trees and on the environment in the back by those wetlands.
Thank you. Your time is up. I appreciate that.
Nest thirty-three is the eagle nest in the Canoe Brook Reservoir. The, uh, Environmental Protection Agency will have that on their website.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Does any other member of the public have any, uh, comments on this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have David Robinson. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, uh, David Robinson, thirty-nine Old Indian Road. Um, I would just like to reiterate what Donna said. Um, council, the mayor, planning board, you guys have a responsibility to us on Old Indian Road. I understand that you have a responsibility to the golf course, but we are residents. We live there. When the golf is over and everyone goes home, we are still there. So put yourself in our shoes where, um, someone's pe, people just in your backyard and you give them a reason to, to hang out, to drink, to do whatever they want to do right in your backyard. I know you wouldn't appreciate it. Now, uh, I'm not a golfer, but I appreciate it. All it takes to, to stop this is to relocate into the middle of the golf course on the other side, where you're near no one's residence. You know, um, where, where you're not disturbing anyone. Um, basically, um, I want you guys to look within yourself as elected officials and take care of the residents that live in your town. That's it for me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson. Do any of them under the public have any, uh, comments? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Susan Campbell. Please state your name and address for the record. Susan?
Hi, my name is Susan Campbell Robinson, thirty-nine Old Indian Road. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Yes, Susan Campbell Robinson, thirty-nine Old Indian Road. I just would like to say, um, I object to the original plan because my property wasn't considered in the original plan.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Great, we have one more.
Go right ahead.
We have, um, Sharrett. That's all it says. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Jennifer Sharrett, eleven Howell Drive, West Orange. Apologies for I re, I got disconnected. I re-pitted my name, uh, that my first name got cut off. Um, I honestly was listening to this meeting for a different application that has not, um, this was the third, which I guess will be heard at a different meeting, but as a complete third party listening to the, to the testimony today and everything else to discuss. My one comment would be that if the planning board does have the discretion to wait and allow the DEP to rule on a wetlands issues, it seems that since the DEP is, has, is, has expertise on that, that's, is the appropriate course of action. I've been dealing with DEP on a totally separate issue and my understanding is they're not, they consider the applications that's before them, not considering what else is, you know, other circumstances that may be in the town, and if it's submitted, they'll do it in the administrative procedure that they have to do. So it seems that if the DEP could potentially say that this, do the wetlands, it shouldn't be built, it would be in taxpayers' interest to not have the planning board make a decision on this prematurely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharrett. Do any other members of the public have any comments on this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We have Donna. Oh, Donna and Alan again. Did they speak yet on, make a comment? Okay, all right.
I just wanted to say something um, to the ECC and the board. Um, it's been a real, I live right behind the golf course. I chose to purchase my house here thirty years ago, specifically because of the golf course and the property. I've, I've cherished it. And I think the golf course, I think we, we as residents are the, one of the greatest assets the golf course has. Um, I would love, visit, buy the golf course to our house, to see the house, have, have a cocktail in the backyard. I would love more contact. Um, I used to play golf quite a lot, but I became blind. I love golf. Um, and I know golf, uh, has its downsides too. And I don't want to hear the downsides anymore, um, which has a lot to do with the vocabulary. So I just wanted to say that I appreciate everybody's time and help. And, um, the board has, uh, been lovely to, to sit and, sit and listen to all of this. But, uh, I feel like I've got a lot of pent up things to say, and I cherish this neighborhood. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. May I make a public comment as a member of the public? I do have a summation and I do not have a long public comment.
Yeah, let, let, we, let's let the public comment, and then if nobody else is commenting, you can go right ahead. Do any other members of the public have any comment? Please, on the top of the case, please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any more.
Good. Mrs. Bennett, you're the last one. Go for it.
Okay, all right. I, I will not use my three minutes uncharacteristically. Okay, so just by way of public comment. There would be no objection. I would not be an objector. Had the golf course considered the neighborhood and the environment. Had the golf course heard the concerns of the neighborhood and environment and, and simply relocated to a more sensible place. There'd be no objection. We wouldn't have had multiple hearings. There would have been no need to, um, obtain a planner. Number one. Number two. The more I learned, I'm, my pool and all the images you see my pool right up along the property line. We have golf balls all the time, all the time. That's a, that's a, you move next to an, an airport, you expect to hear airplanes. You, you live next to a golf course, you expect golf balls. What I didn't expect, especially from a golf course that's been around since the eighteen hundreds is beer bottles being thrown up and over our fence. Is trash being thrown up and over our fence, and I don't want to introduce more of that, especially not right in our backyard. I have a child. There are other children, there are other neighbors with children who play in the backyard. My son invites friends over all the time in our backyard by our pool. They hear it all the time. To the point where my son had to shout language because of the way golfers were behaving. When you introduce alcohol this much closer, it's that much more prevalent. It just naturally is. I want to enjoy my backyard. I just want them to put this very small building somewhere else, away from wetlands, away from neighborhood children, away from our backyards. That's it. That's it. And there are plenty of places to do that, plenty of places to do that almost halfway or even closer to halfway. Last point. The more I learned about the wetlands, the more I realized what has been going on on the property has been a destruction of the wetlands. I contacted the DEP. I currently being investigated, and part of that investigation is a delineation of the boundaries. They may not even need a letter of interpretation. Right, that's the end of my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. You said you had a summation.
I do. Is it time for that?
Yes, ma'am.
I go first?
Ma'am, that's it. There ain't, there ain't no other.
Okay, my summation. This matter was presented to the board with inaccurate, incomplete site plans. There are several questions before this board. One, can an applicant who hasn't provided an accurate depiction of wetlands, nor provided the expert who has delineated and designated the wetlands, rely upon those site plans and ask a planning board to make determinations about a proposed building when the distance from the wetlands is foundational in consideration? How can you possibly make a decision on this application without knowing that where the applicant proposes to locate this building is even possible? The applicant could have proffered the wetlands expert. You heard her. She decided not to. I would submit, you shouldn't approve an application that includes unverified wetlands designations and delineations for an applicant who tried not to depict them at all. The next question is number two. Is the halfway house that the applicant proposes even a customary accessory use? As the West Orange Code, New Jersey statute, and case law defines? The applicant claims it is and presents seven examples of golf courses for this board to consider. But TANIS tells us that you must do more than just that. This board must decide if, based on the specific facts, the two-prong test has been met. Namely, the first prong, is this halfway house customarily incidental to the permitted use? And then, two, what impact would this halfway house have on the surrounding area? The applicant and its expert jumped the green, so to speak, on this issue. Mr. Pesolano claims that seven examples of alcohol-selling halfway houses are sufficient to prove that this is customary and that it doesn't matter what distance those halfway houses are from the wetlands and residential property lines and homes. But the expert who applies TANIS correctly, Mr. Stack, explains that these facts matter. That seven examples out of more than one hundred eighteen hole golf courses isn't sufficient to satisfy the customary accessory use test. And even if you took a more distilled radius approach of the seven, looking at, let's say, a twenty-mile radius defined by the furthest of those seven examples. Seven out of thirty-nine courses, the applicant fails to prove customary accessory use by every measure. Even if you disagree, TANIS requires you to apply and consider that second prong. The impact of the proposed use on the surrounding area. This is where those seven examples give us the greatest guidance. Not one is as close to the protected wetlands and the residential neighbors as the applicant proposes to locate its halfway house. Here, this board must consider the unanimous voice of a neighborhood opposed to the proposed building's location and its plan to sell alcohol too close to our homes and yards and the legally protected wetlands. If you ignore that, you ignore TANIS. TANIS requires you to consider us, as does the municipal land use law. Because the impact of a building where the applicant told us they planned to sell alcohol is serious and requires this board to balance those interests. The next question, have you properly considered the evidence? Put aside your biases, listened carefully to the objectors' concerns, permitted the public to fully present its concerns, researched the law, visited the location, seen it, and understood its impact? Because TANIS is instructed to this matter, not just as case law about a two-pronged analysis, but also to understand that on appeal, courts must intervene when a planning board prejudges an application or an objector. Shows bias, refuses an objector to be promoted to panelist, cuts off the public's questions, ignores the errors of the applicant, doesn't post objectors' replies and responses to the official record so they can't be read by the board, jokes during a planning expert's testimony, making glib comments and gestures. making glib comments and gestures when invited to visit the site, or stating that they must approve the application before all the evidence is heard. TANIS says prejudging an application is actionable error. Another question, is this an application where the planning board should use its discretion and condition its approval? Municipal land use law says that you can condition approval on outside agencies. You can condition the approval of this application on a letter of interpretation from the State Department of Environmental Protection and the township's ABC Board. But the municipal land use law goes further. It states you can do so in appropriate instances. I would submit, this is not an appropriate instance. This applicant didn't delineate or designate wetlands on its site plans in violation of law. The determination of the resource value of the wetlands is in question, and the applicant chose not to present their expert. It is entirely possible that they've gotten the determination incorrect, and then their buffers and setbacks are inaccurate as well, as well as the location of the proposed buildings. They didn't indicate trees that needed removing, and they still don't show trees along the sanitation line that they proposed to install. They scrambled to show examples of other courses with halfway houses. But that doesn't answer the pivotal question about customary accessory use. They told you that they can sell alcohol anywhere on the property, but that wasn't true. They need a liquor license for every location where they propose to sell alcohol. And even then, when that was discovered, they now suggest that you shouldn't consider that they plan to sell alcohol from the proposed building. The logical, since the municipal land use law specifically requires them to notice the public if they intend to sell alcohol from the proposed location, even that notice was done incorrectly and needed to be redone. Municipal land use law does permit planning boards to condition approvals. But ask yourself, with all of the errors and omissions that you would not have known about if it weren't for the objectors and members of the public who raised their voices, is this an appropriate instance to trust an applicant to finally comply with the law and do the right thing? Lastly, I ask you this. If you were us, would any of this be okay with you? I ask you to apply common sense and the golden rule. Would you want your peaceful enjoyment of your backyard, your family time, and protected wetlands to be destroyed by the noise, the trash, the sights, and the sounds of a building selling alcohol on the golf course behind your home? Would it be okay with you if alcohol was being sold a few feet from children playing when it could have been located anywhere else? The applicant's witnesses were clear. They never considered us. They said it. They didn't even include the wetlands until our expert identified them. They aren't concerned about anything but what they want. The code, the state statutes, and even case law all require you to apply common sense and consider us. Until you have an application before you that has verified accurate site plans with evidence that a halfway house is located as a cust, as is customary of golf courses in this part of New Jersey, you should not approve this application. The applicant could have cured all of these defects. The applicant could have located its halfway house and alcohol sales further